I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for a work session, a work session portion of our agenda, and note that Council President O'Carraw is attending by Zoom. Thank you for attending, all of you. And I'm starting with review of agenda and items on consent. Does anybody have any comments about that consent agenda or anything? Okay. I am going to ask for an amended agenda a little bit later because the mayor of Wes Lynn is coming to our communications section of the meeting, and it looks like it'd be difficult. They also have a city council meeting tonight, so we want to allow the travel time necessary. Okay? And any councilor concerns? Okay. So we'll start with our pre-council work session, and the first topic is Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study with Matt Lorenzen.
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, my name is Matt Lorenzen. I'm the city's Economic Development Manager. I'm joined this evening by our lead consultant on this feasibility study project, Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting. And she'll be contributing to this meeting tonight in just a moment on the topic of the feasibility study. During the 30 minutes we have tonight, we need to cover three things, and ultimately looking for guidance with regard to the issue before council, as noted in the staff report. Does the council support the findings of the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study and direct staff to prepare a resolution, including final ballot language, referring the question of Town Center Urban Renewal for advisory vote on May 21, 2024? So this is an exciting moment for me, anyway. I have been leading this project over the past six months or so, and have the privilege tonight to present you with the final draft, unless there's further feedback from the council of the feasibility study document itself as a whole, with all of the components that we've been discussing along the way, put together and ready for your sort of blessing and direction to move us forward. We'll look at that. We will also look at draft ballot language that we've developed and been iterating on for some time now. And then we will conclude by just taking a look at our communication strategy as we reach out to residents in the community to inform them before a potential advisory vote in May. So without further ado, I'm going to pass off to Elaine Howard to talk to us about the feasibility study document that's included in your packet.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Howard, and as Matt said, I'm part of the team that prepared this. The other consulting firm is Tiberius Solutions, and Nick Poppanuk is the principal of that. And I know you've heard Nick speak with you before, but we always team together and want to acknowledge the other half of our team. I'm going to go through the feasibility study very quickly, all of the components of this. You have heard before, so there should be nothing in this that surprises you. It's just finally together in a full document for you to review. So what we went through in the feasibility study was area boundary, blight findings, comprehensive plan conformance, recommendations of other plans, your projects and programs, financial analysis, impacts on taxing districts, and then potential next steps. So I'll go through kind of each one of those fairly succinctly for you. And is the map on the next?
It is.
Okay. The area boundary is what is shown highlighted within the yellow. It is basically the same boundary as your town center plan, except it extends south of Wilsonville Road so that it can take in those projects that are the new crossings to make both pedestrian and bicycle transportation and access easier to the south of Wilsonville Road, and then the access over the freeway and a landing spot for the I-5 bridge connection. So this is the boundary expanded a little bit from the town center plan, and it's the boundary upon which this feasibility study was predicated. So within the boundary, we looked at blight findings. We referred back to the statute for the definitions of blight. Within this area, there is a preponderance of surface parking. All of that surface parking does not provide any tax revenue for the city or any other overlapping taxing jurisdictions, and it certainly doesn't provide a sense of place for the residents of Wilsonville. So that in itself will satisfy any blight findings because you have land that is not used to its highest and best use. The other blight findings for this area are the needed infrastructure improvements, so your transportation system, and then rerouting of your underground utilities, so the water, stormwater, wastewater. All of those systems are components of what can be identified as blight in an urban renewal plan. So you definitely have your blight findings that can be made for adoption of an urban renewal plan. For comprehensive plan conformance, when this was adopted, when the town center plan itself was adopted by the planning commission, your staff made very detailed comprehensive plan conformance statements at that time. Those statements can be rolled entirely into an urban renewal plan that shows that the plan itself that implements your town center plan definitely will conform to your comprehensive plan because it's basically using the same wording and the same types of projects, the same projects. There are also recommendations of other plans, so your urban renewal strategic plan, recommended pursuing or looking at the feasibility of urban renewal within the town center, and the Town Center Infrastructure Funding Plan also recommended urban renewal as one of the main sources for funding of the different infrastructure needs within the area. The projects and programs were taken directly from your town center plan, and they mostly include those infrastructure needs, so your streetscape needs, your sidewalks, plazas, the street rerouting, creating new streets, and then all of the underground infrastructure, and then in addition to that, incentives to be able to work with developers on either acquiring land upfront or providing incentives to help make development happen within the area. Tiberius Solutions completed the financial analysis for the area, which projects a maximum indebtedness of $181 million to be able to do projects and programs within that area. That $181 million translates into today's dollars of approximately $101 million. So that is the amount of money that you would have to allocate to those projects, programs, and administration over the lifetime of the urban renewal area. The difference between that is just that time value of money. The maximum indebtedness is over a full 28 to 30-year timeframe. Bringing that back to today's dollars takes out all of that inflationary cost set, bring that up to the $181 million. The impacts on taxing districts are identified in the plan, the feasibility study. Those impacts are projected annually for every taxing district. Those impacts add up to about $211,400,000 because they include interest on debt, and it is anticipated that you would do long-term borrowings to be able to do the more expensive projects within your plan. When we are talking about taxing districts, I think it's important to understand that we ran all of this through five meetings of our task force. Council President O'Carraw was the chair of that task force. We did have representation on the task force of the key taxing districts, so Tuolatin Valley, Fire and Rescue, Clackamas County, the school district, and the community college, all attended a majority of the task force meetings. The task force at the end did recommend, there was one abstention by TVFNR, and TVFNR, I've worked with them on many urban renewal plans, they always abstain because they believe it's only their board that would allow a vote yes or no on the preparation, but they really like being involved. Absent their abstention, there was a full commitment from everyone else on the task force and a vote of approval of sending this on to the city council for your review and potentially going out for the advisory vote. You also received very nice kudos, I guess, from different members of the task force on the input of your staff and their organization and the skill in putting this together for you because it is very complicated. It takes a lot of different steps, and getting ready for those steps has taken a lot of work. Your staff has been, Matt has been the key. He's been very involved, but you've had a number of other staff who have provided very valuable input, both in your planning department, your finance department, your public works. So it's been an integrated effort of your entire staff, and they have been extremely helpful in putting this together. The potential next steps are for you to review this and decide whether you want to then pass it on for your advisory vote. That advisory vote would be in May of 2024. The timeline that we've been working on is hoping to get an urban renewal plan actually adopted by September of 2024 so that you get it adopted before any, thank you, Matt. Do you want me to wait for this?
I think it's okay we cover it now.
Okay. So that it is adopted prior to the assessor establishing a new tax rule in October of 2024. To make that happen, you would need to be preparing the actual plan and report while you're waiting for the information on that ballot measure. So if that ballot measure gives you the affirmative to move forward, you would be prepared to start the formal review adoption process that next month. So you would get the vote in May, and in June, you would start going through your planning commission, out to your taxing districts for a 45-day consult and confer presentation to Clackamas County, and then to the city council for review of a non-emergency ordinance. So those are the potential next steps in terms of the plan. There are also the next steps that, Matt, I don't know if you want to step through those in terms of your adopting a resolution and a final ballot title. So you want to hit that, or I can?
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So I think we are looking towards a January 18 city council meeting for you to actually adopt a resolution to, and a final ballot title to put this on the May ballot. The March 21 is the deadline to submit that ballot title to the elections office, and then May 21 would be the election day. So if that all goes well, which I anticipate it will, between June and August, you would do the actual formal adoption process. During that entire time, you may have public outreach and communications. That public outreach and communications needs to be very careful to, because it is a ballot measure, even though it is an advisory measure, the Secretary of State wants to make sure that whatever you're saying after a certain step is purely factual and not trying to lobby for the ballot measure, but that is factual information that is presented. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Are there any questions on the feasibility study?
Yeah, we have several questions.
Would it be helpful to bring the report up on the screen, or would you prefer to just?
No, I actually think they're going to be relatively simple and easy to answer.
Okay.
The first question is regarding, just to refresh my memory, on the real estate activities, the $19 million for that. Is that to acquire any of the properties that developers won't acquire or be opportunistic? Can you explain to me what that scenario would be and why that's the amount that it is?
Sure. So we talked a little bit about this during the last meeting and clarified that indeed the idea there is that, at least in some instances, there may be opportunities to acquire property or aggregate property where the private sector is either unable or unwilling to do so, or where the city just sees it as high-value, high-opportunity property and would like to influence the development of that property specifically. So in that scenario, the city would acquire the property through input with the task force from the city council, potentially other committees of the city, develop a program of development for that site before offering it through a request for proposals back to the private development community to develop in alignment with that city vision that's been developed.
And if I recall from our last presentation, that would be recaptured, correct? That $19 million or most of it would be recaptured by developers?
It depends. It depends on what the market is at the time that you put that back out. So sometimes that's recaptured in whole. Sometimes to be able to make a development happen that is the type of development that you want, for example, if you're saying we want X units of affordable housing on this site, you may need to write down the cost of that land to provide the incentive to get you something that you want. None of that would be done without the city council input, but there are many different types of acquisition of land and then the decision on how you actually dispose of that land depending on the type of development you're wanting to occur.
Okay, great.
And another couple of things about acquisition. People always get worried about eminent domain. So this property that is going to be acquired, that then is going to be resold, cannot be acquired through eminent domain. You have to acquire it from a willing seller. So that's very important to people. And it is not the intent of the city to hold on and be the landlord of any property within the area. At this point, it's the intent to find a developer to come in to develop the type of development that you're looking for in your town center plan, so mixed-use development.
Can I ask one that's related to that topic?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So on that topic, we had talked about, in other situations, but we've talked about where there may be a piece of land, a parcel that is, you know, it's out there, it's an unusual shape, and it doesn't really lend itself to something that somebody's going to buy. I mean, I don't know what, you know, particular funny, unusual, too small, or weirdly shaped piece of land could have more value if it were paired up with an adjacent one.
Correct.
And the two, they're two different owners at the moment, and they don't really have any obligation to do that. So is that another example of how this plan could kind of facilitate, okay, now it's a shape that is appealing in a place that is appealing for this kind of?
Both a shape and a size.
Shape and size.
Because if you are looking for mixed-use development, you need to have a parcel that's large enough to make that mixed-use development work in terms of number of units. So you might have to acquire a couple of parcels, put them together, and then it becomes a prime developmental parcel where before it was not.
And the reason buying land for affordable housing is something I hear about a lot from other cities when they can find a way to do it is because the builders are not expected to shoulder the entire burden of housing cost. So if you could, you have to find ways of making it less, you know, cutting out some of the cost in order to be able to make it affordable, and that could be a reason.
In certain instances, I think that's absolutely true. It might not be true in all instances. There are certainly developers that have access to certain streams of capital that for-profit developers don't have access to that make the economics of an affordable project work. But indeed, there are instances where public investment or subsidy is needed.
And we don't know if we're doing any of this. You're just saying these are possible things. Okay, thanks.
And then my next question is regarding TVFNR. So I know that they had originally had some concerns about the pedestrian bridge and the timing of that. Can you give me a bit of a background? And here's a crazy reason why. So I was thinking about the bridge this weekend, and I was thinking about if, is it wide enough that law enforcement can use the bridge in an emergency? That they can, or is that just a pedestrian?
I'm looking for Zach Weigel, the city engineer. I don't know the specific width or weight capacity of that bridge.
It was, but not in an emergency, not even in an emergency. No, because you would need approachways on each end, and it would make the project probably?
And there aren't approachways on each end.
Right.
Okay, got it. Got it. But so what was the reason for TVFNR's initial concerns?
Let me jump in. I've worked with TVFNR on probably eight projects in the last couple of years in other localities and know them very well and appreciate their input always. We worked with TVFNR about three years ago on a pedestrian bridge in another community. And that pedestrian bridge was not going to be used to help spur economic development. It was a safety feature to allow for access over Highway 99, but there was really no component of it that would spur economic development. When the first question came up about this bridge, I think TVFNR was worried about that same issue, and they are always looking for projects that help facilitate economic development. We had a very robust discussion in the task force about that, and we're told by, you are very lucky that you have some longstanding members of that task force who are developers and realtors and property owners. And we're told by those people that this pedestrian bridge is not just for facilitating that pedestrian activity, but that those property owners within that area and business developers really see it as an economic development tie and a reason to connect where the West Station is to the downtown, to the town center area, to help provide for that transit connection that, right now, if somebody gets off of West at that station, they've then got to figure out how and when they get from there back over to where the work is. So if you're developing a town center where you're going to have jobs, if you have that pedestrian bridge and people are coming in on West, it's easy for them to get across and to their jobs. So they made a very strong case that that pedestrian bridge was not just a pedestrian amenity, but that it was very important to them for the economic development within that area. I think although TVFNR doesn't, they like some of your other projects better, they did not end up asking that that project be removed, but let us know that they did like some of your other projects better, that they could see the direct tie to economic development.
I do too. I think I mentioned that at the last work session, that the timing of the bridge coming first makes a lot of sense economically and development-wise, so, but I failed to ask that question two weeks ago. So thank you. And then one more question.
Sure. I'll just interject really quickly if I can as well. One of the things that TVFNR also felt was very important, and that's reflected in the study document, is they would like the city at every possibility to pursue grant funding in order to relieve the burden from the taxing districts and urban renewal. And although it's not a done deal right now, we're looking at pursuing a federal raise grant to support the bike and pedestrian bridge and would be potentially moving forward with a consultant to help us complete that work, which is due at the end of February. All that to say, we heard TVFNR on their concerns, so I feel like the development community addressed those in part. We're also addressing their concerns by pursuing this very first grant opportunity we have even before the district is?
And there were two other things that TVFNR did ask for, and I hadn't covered those yet, but as long as we're talking about them, we may as well bring that up. They did ask for a set duration to any future urban renewal plan, so, and like a 30-year timeframe. And they did ask for performance metrics to be used or to be identified within the urban renewal plan to allow for them to monitor the success and the city to monitor the success over the life of the plan. So, and then the third thing was to pursue as much other leverage money as you can, grants or other sources of funding.
Great, great, thank you. I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Just to summarize your presentation and what we're doing and what we're talking about, and thank you for your presentation. We have an area of light, and you described it because we have a vast area of parking that could be used for better and higher use. And so in order to fund this, instead of raising taxes, we freeze the tax rate, and then we take the other tax districts that you described, the school district, the community college, TVR, and then collect the money from those taxes and use that to make improvements to this property with the infrastructure so it's more appealing for developers to come in. Is that correct?
That's 95% correct. I'm going to say the freezing the tax base just a little differently, so that at the time an urban renewal plan is adopted, the assessor calculates the total assessed value within the area, and all the taxing districts continue getting their taxes off that. Any increase in value in the area, the assessor then allocates all that money to the agency. So the school district doesn't allocate it, it goes to the assessor, never gets back to the taxing districts, and they give it back to you. The assessor takes it directly to the urban renewal agency. So you were very, very close.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
And following up on that, just continuing along that pathway, then could you, we have this described in here, but once the urban renewal district is closed down, let's see if I can find the example of the other urban renewal districts, then you, I mean, you've got your own words, Elaine, but you're the expert at this. But once the urban renewal district is closed down, then that much, hopefully you've had a lot more development, there's many more buildings in there that are taxable and are paying taxes, and once it's closed, that's when a different and higher amount is paid out to those entities.
That's correct. So when an urban renewal terminates and an area terminates, as I think one of your exhibits to the feasibility study is an example from your year 2000 plan that showed the tremendous increase in assessed value within that area. And all of that going to be, a lot has been released over the years, you've been underleaving over the years in addition, giving money to taxing districts. When that officially closes down, all of that value goes to all the different taxing districts to be able to use to provide their services, including the city itself.
Do you have, but, thank you, do you happen to have exhibit 17 on a slide, which is the summary of the year 2000 plan and the West Side plan?
I think so.
Should have asked you that ahead of time, sorry.
That's all right.
What page is that?
Oh, Council President Ocreval, I see your hand is up. It is on page 41 or in the packet, page 51, so it's item A.
Thank you.
Perhaps Councilor Ocreval can go ahead while I'm navigating here.
Okay, let's go with Council President Ocreval.
Well, I don't want to derail from this, but?
We can come back to that, it's easy to move it ahead.
While Matt's looking for that page, I wonder, Elaine, if you could give some comments as well, specifically, you know, as we're talking about the impact on the different taxing districts, if you could talk a little bit about the school funding and how that works in the state of Oregon? Because I know that that comes up as a question with urban renewal and if this is limiting the funding that's going to our schools, but it's a bit more complicated than just, you know, a direct, well, I don't know, I wish, if you could explain that a little bit in more detail, I think that would be helpful information for us all to have.
Yes. So although we prepare tables that show impacts to the taxing districts, including the education districts, those impacts to the education districts are not direct impacts, and they aren't direct impacts because they are funded, the education service district and the school district are funded through the state school fund, and that state school fund receives its allocations both from permanent rate property taxes but also other funding sources. It's funded on a per pupil basis around the state, that per pupil amount is stable. There are add-ons if you have so many people under certain income levels, but it's a stable amount per pupil, and that amount does not go down in any city because you have urban renewal. The state will backfill anything that the school district does not have to meet that amount from other funding sources. The community colleges have a similar funding plan, it's a community college funding plan, and they are funded based on the amount of classes that are taken. So we talk about the education impacts as indirect impacts because they affect those big funding sources, the pools, but they don't affect the taxing districts directly because they are backfilled by the other funding sources that the legislature has access to.
Any more comments, Council President Ocreval?
Thank you. I think that's a helpful detail for us all to have in the back of our minds and as part of our conversation with the public too, as we're explaining urban renewal, because urban renewal is complicated. The other thing I wonder if you could detail for us is bonds, if urban renewal affects different, like a school bond or a bond that perhaps TVFNR would have or things like that too.
Thank you. New urban renewal districts, so if you adopted this new plan, do not impact local option levies or bonds. So if the school district issued a bond for facilities, urban renewal does not take any of that money. If the school district does a local option levy or TVFNR does, urban renewal does not take any of that money. They used to, older urban renewal districts used to. We helped facilitate a change in the legislature to stop that. So urban renewal only takes division of taxes from permanent rate levies. So no bonds or local option levies are impacted by a new urban renewal area.
Did I find the right page, Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And those were great points that you brought up, Council President Ocreval, and because you're chair of this committee and have been of the urban renewal task force as is described in this packet, I want to make sure that you, that I see you when you're raising your hand and that you add what you see fit so that we can hear from you. So thank you, Matt. This was the chart that I thought would be, I think it's just a really good illustration, and maybe Matt or Elaine would like to just describe it.
Yeah, I think we can do so succinctly. In both the year 2000 plan and the West Side plan, year 2000 already retired, West Side plan will be retired at the end of this fiscal year. You can see their original frozen base, which is the original assessed value base that was frozen at the time those plans were created. The line above demonstrates the value of property, the assessed value of property within the district boundary at the time those plans either were retired or will be retired. In the case of the year 2000 plan, you see that it grew by orders of magnitude, and then the West Side plan even more, even more so, going from $16 million to over $1 billion in assessed value. So this is a demonstration of what urban renewal is meant to do, create tax value that would not exist but for the urban renewal investments.
Thank you. And, you know, we've probably all had conversations with neighbors and people, gee, what's happening, you know, when are we going to see things happening over there? And when the task force, when the town center plan was developed, we had a lot of conversation about this because they had talked to 2,000 people. I think that the advent of the pandemic caused a lot of distraction and interruption and slowdown of the economy and all kinds of things. But it has been articulated in this packet that it, the urban renewal task force has said that they don't believe we are going to see that town center materializing at a very reasonable pace on its own. It would probably be very slow, to the point that you might not even know you're in on pace to develop the town center plan. And so I appreciate the study that's gone into identifying that urban renewal is necessary to do this. And there's one more thing that I wanted to see before you go to that title, ballot title.
Of course.
Sorry, Matt, you had that, page 109 is a fantastic description of the year 2000 plan. People who are on the committee talk about it all the time, but it has a pictorial that describes what was developed in the year 2000 plan as an example, and it lists all these things that we use every day. Wilsonville Road improvements, Boone's Ferry Road, Memorial Drive, Courtside Drive, Fifth to Kinsman, you know, it has a whole list of streets, it has a list right there of parks and recreation, the land acquisition for the Boozer and Murasse land acquisition for the park, the Stein Boozer Barn improvements, which have developed an activity center in our city that's busy all the time, the acquisition of the land for the building we're sitting in right now that's heavily used, and certainly Town Center Park in Murasse Plaza, and then you just go on to the school partnerships, you know, these are, this is all what's packed into, let me say, the year 2000 plan. Just wanted to say that, so.
That's an excellent point to bring up, because think about what Wilsonville would be without.
Yeah. Okay. So, sorry, no more interruptions. Council President Ocreval, anything else? Okay.
So I will try and cover this briefly, just noticing time, but I also, of course, Mayor, it's your meeting and you let me know. I've made one clarifying statement on this slide that I'd like to correct from a previous meeting. I've since learned from the Secretary of State's office that under their Safe Harbor program, which is a program that they operate that allows an agency that's going to be putting something on an election ballot, to have that material reviewed by something on an election ballot, to have that material reviewed by the Secretary of State and then be shielded, at least in part, from investigation or liability associated if there were a claim ever made or an accusation that that language was somehow unlawful or not in line with elections law. The ballot language itself cannot go through the Safe Harbor Program, we're relying on our own legal review for that, that protection, as it were. The materials that can be reviewed are all of the community outreach that I'll touch on in just a moment, but you have ballot language in your packet as an attachment. It includes these four different pieces, which end up either in the voter's pamphlet or on the ballot itself. I guess, in the name of time, I would just ask if you, there are any particular sections of concern, or just that you feel you'd like to discuss?
I just have one general question, and that is, I know that it's an advisory vote. What is the precedent for actually going forward with an advisory vote, and, and the activities of whether or not you move forward if the advisory vote does or does not pass?
I may defer to others that can provide better input here, but my understanding of Wilsonville history is that if we go to the Year 2000 Plan, voters actually initially said no to that plan, and the City Council took a pause, regrouped, reformulated that plan in such a fashion that the taxing agencies and the community could get behind it, and it passed after its second attempt. My understanding is that every advisory vote that has transpired since then, for the West Side Plan, for a program that no longer exists, exists called TIF Districts, which is now our WIN program, and for Coffee Creek, those votes have been successful.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I think, I think what's important for us to understand, and I have to commend you on the depth of the report, when I was going through it, and the amount of study that's gone into this, and Council President O'Gravall, for all of your efforts on leading that task force, because it, it really starts to build a carving, carving of the story of what our future can be as a city.
I think Councilor O'Gravall may have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Council President O'Gravall, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yes, I mean, I agree, this, this study, it contains a lot of information, this is a complex topic, it's incredibly important for our future, and then we are limited to, here we see, captioned 10 words, question 20 words, summary 175 words. We're quite limited with what we're able to present to the public in that ballot vote, you know, the piece that they're voting on, and yet, we're trying to cover so much, and so that's quite a challenge. I do have one question, kind of comment, on some of the language that I wanted to throw out there for, just feedback and thoughts from council and from staff. I spent some time reading over the last, because in our packet, we also have access to what the last ballot language was for when we passed Coffee Creek, because that was like the most recent one that was passed by the vote, and then also by council. And there was one line in the summary statement that I thought was actually quite good at explaining what urban renewal is, because, you know, again, explain this all in 20 words or less, right? And that line was, let's see, kind of direct everyone, and I guess I just thought, huh, is there a way that we could use this line? Should we use this line in our summary statement this time around? Okay, if we go, apologize for the little delay here, okay, if we go to page 111 of our packet, this, okay, that is the, the language for this time around, and, where was the language? Here we go, sorry, 117 has the language that was used for the Coffee Creek. And under the summary, that second paragraph, it says, "Tax increment financing is a financing tool which uses taxes paid on increased property values within the district to fund construction of streets and other public infrastructure." I thought that was a pretty good statement. We have a similar line on page 111, and this is the last sentence of the paragraph that says, "TIF is not a new tax or tax increase," which I do appreciate that we called that out in bold, but the last line that we currently have is, "Urban renewal is a financing program that allows for the concentrated use of these tax revenues to facilitate economic growth and community vitality in designated areas of the city." So here we're talking about allowing for concentrated use of the tax revenues. The other phrase, talked about, the financing tool uses taxes paid on increased property So I wondered, what if we did something, would another option be something like, "Urban renewal is a financing tool which uses taxes paid on increased property values within the district to fund projects encouraging economic growth and community vitality," kind of a blend of the two. I wondered if that, if others felt that explains what urban renewal is, how it works in a clear way?
I like your suggestion. I think it's, you know, if you think every word has to pay its way, concentrated use can probably take a vacation.
This is not an easy task at all, to try to, you know, wordsmith that down, so, so I don't know, I'm just throwing out...
So just to give staff time to work on that, that's a good suggestion, we're not voting here, but...
Yeah, and as we go back to the video record, and can even correspond separately with Councilor O'Gravall, we can fine tune that sentence to be more...
I think, I think that, that's a nice succinct...
If you'd like to email that to Matt, Councilor O'Gravall?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. It sounds like, you know, we're all in agreement that we want things to be clear, we've spent hours reading about this, and so the voters will have, you know, I think the more straightforward it can be, the best, the better.
Absolutely, and this is in the packet, but I'll call it out here, and for purposes of the record, the version of the language you see now has been drafted by staff and then brought to the task force and wordsmithed significantly, it passed through the legal department, revised further by our consulting team, and now brought to you, and we'll make this additional revision, we're very receptive to all these changes. I just, for the record, want to state that this wasn't quickly scratched out and put before you tonight.
Right, I understand that, but I would also say that it's still quite lengthy, and I don't know if, I would bet you've already brought it down as far as you can, but it is, it is still quite lengthy for the, for the voter.
So, we can certainly pare it down, but when thinking about using as much capacity as we're allowed, we typically want to use as many words as we're allowed.
I would, I would say, you know, we do, we want to give the voters, and all these, you know, all these entities have been a part of this, and so we're trying to give them as much information to work with as we're allowed to.
I think, I think we're trying to be clear and concise, and concise is not something that's just nice, we have to be concise, so, we'll err on the side of clear, is what I hear you saying.
And I think the reality is, the, when we're voting in our voter's pamphlet, most of us never get beyond the summary, so as long as we have everything in the summary, that's great. The explanatory statement is for those who want to delve further, so it just gives a little more...
A complete story.
Right.
That's a good point.
Okay, so, given that we did take more time than, I mean, I'm glad we spent the time that we did, it's really important, and if you feel like you've gotten what you need, I think we've heard from everybody, we can move on to the next item. Council President O'Gravall, thank you again, and to the Urban Renewal Task Force.
Shall I interpret that to mean that you direct staff to prepare the resolution for the January 18th meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
With some clarification on that language that Councilor O'Gravall's going to say.
Absolutely, what we bring you on January 18th will reflect the changes that we discussed to the language.
Okay, so we will now go to the Coffee Creek draft assessment.
I always get a little bit confused, sorry. So, yes, please navigate for me. There we go. Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors, my name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and I am here tonight to provide City Council with an update on the status of the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District Form-Based Code Assessment, as well as to seek input on possible modifications to the standards. As council is aware, the Coffee Creek Master Plan area is located in northwest Wilsonville, west of I-5, shaded blue in the map on this slide. Earlier this year, staff reviewed the timeline to land use approval for the four completed development projects in Coffee Creek, and types of requested waivers for the Form-Based Code. In July, staff conducted three focused discussions with applicants and their consultant teams to gain feedback from a customer service standpoint about the Form-Based Code. We also engaged in September in a follow-up discussion with one of the applicants to understand in more depth which of the Form-Based Code standards could more easily align with current and future needs of prospective industrial users in the Coffee Creek area. Based on this work, staff determined that modification to the land use review tracks and process is not needed, however slight modifications to the Form-Based Code standards are needed to make compliance more achievable for applicants. The objective of the modifications is to enable applicants to use the Class II Administrative Review Track while not compromising the city's ability to continue creating a connected, high-quality employment center in Coffee Creek. Staff provided examples of possible modifications and sought input from Planning Commission and City Council at work sessions in September, and staff has since refined those modifications, and at tonight's meeting is seeking input on six Form-Based Code standards, five of which had two or more waivers, to which modifications are warranted. The six Form-Based Code standards are listed on this slide, and specific modifications, as well as the rationale for the proposed changes, are discussed in Attachment 1 of the City Council staff report. I'll briefly provide some more detail about specific modifications on the next slides. With respect to parcel driveway width, the current standard is a maximum driveway width of 24 feet from a supporting street. A 10% allowed adjustment increases the maximum to 26.4 feet. As illustrated in this example from the Precision Countertops Project, the proposed modification would include two driveway width maximums. It would keep the current standard for the primary driveway, illustrated on the left of the slide, that provides access for passenger vehicles and light duty trucks. The driveway width would increase to 40 feet maximum with a 10% allowed adjustment to 44 feet for a secondary driveway, or a driveway that provides access for larger vehicles, such as heavy delivery trucks and semi-tractor trailers. A wider driveway example is shown on the right. This modification is based on the rationale that while the main goal of the driveway width maximum is limiting the distance that pedestrians have to cross a driveway, thus providing for better pedestrian connectivity, the pedestrian crossing distance needs to be balanced with a safe turning radius for larger vehicles to prevent traffic slowdowns and stacking on the street, and damage to curbs and landscape areas from turning trucks. The current standard for parcel pedestrian access width from the right-of-way of adjacent streets into a development site is a minimum of eight feet. As illustrated in another example from Precision Countertops, the proposed modification would continue to require an eight-foot access width for pathways between the public right-of-way and the primary building entrance, as shown in the illustration on the left. For a building with two office end caps along its primary frontage, the eight-foot width would continue to apply to the access for both entrances, but other pathways into the site that do not connect to the primary building entrance could be a minimum of five feet wide, provided they meet all other requirements of the Development Code related to accessibility. An example of this is shown in the illustration on the right. The reasoning behind this modification is that it seems overly burdensome to require all connections from the public right-of-way to be eight feet wide, and the highest priority should be connecting the primary frontage to the primary building entrance, or entrances. The current standing for, standard for parking location and extent on the primary building frontage is one double-loaded bay with a maximum of 16 spaces, to be used only for short-term visitor and disabled parking. The allowed adjustment increases the maximum to 20 spaces, but keeps the use limitation. The proposed modification would require that, or would keep the number of spaces unchanged at 20 maximum, but the requirement that all allowed spaces must be located within one double-loaded bay of parking would be eliminated. The example on this slide from the Coffee Creek Logistics Center project illustrates how allowing one or more single parking bays can be preferable, particularly when a building has more than one primary building entrance, or is occupied by more than one user. The modification also would require that 50% of allowed spaces be designated for short-term visitor and disabled parking only, thus allowing other spaces to be utilized for longer duration or by other users, such as employees. This modification is based on the rationale that minimizing the appearance of parking from an addressing street is key focus in the pattern book, with the intent of providing a human scale to the public realm. Limiting the total number of spaces as per current standard while allowing flexibility in parking location, configuration, and use continues to achieve that objective. With respect to retaining walls, the current standard limits their height to a maximum of 48 inches, or four feet, with a 20% allowed adjustment to 57.6 inches, or four feet nine and a half inches. The proposed modification would keep the maximum height of the current standard for retaining walls that are visible from the adjacent street right-of-way, but in situations where a retaining wall is only visible to users from within a site, the height maximum would increase to 60 inches, or five feet, with a 20% allowed adjustment to 72 inches, or six feet. The illustration from Delta Logistics Project on this slide highlights a retaining wall that is the red line, that runs parallel to Southwest Day Road, but is not visible from the right-of-way. With the modification, this wall could be up to six feet tall. The reasoning behind this change is that the pattern book emphasizes the intent to minimize site grading to preserve the natural character of a site, stating that contoured slopes are generally preferred to the installation of retaining walls, and that where retaining walls are necessary to support site development, they should be integrated with other site-designed features, such as stairs, ramps, and planters, where possible. It seems reasonable to slightly increase the allowed height of walls not visible from the right-of-way... the right-of-way to provide some design flexibility while still achieving the intent of the standard. The current standard also requires that retaining walls longer than 50 linear feet introduce a five-foot minimum horizontal offset to reduce their apparent mass. The retaining wall modification would keep the current standard for the wall design, but clarify the meaning of horizontal offset, but while, by providing some explanatory text, graphics, or illustrations, as this has been confusing for applicants. The example from the Delta Logistics Project on the left of this slide shows one design solution with a large planter and sitting wall at the retaining wall base. The picture and illustration on the right of the slide provide examples of more conventional horizontal offset solutions. Staff notes that the Council Staff Report indicates this proposed modification would allow a horizontal and/or vertical offset, or jog in a retaining wall. However, because a vertical offset can result in wall stability issues and lead to water penetration and failure, staff has revised the recommendation to keep the standard as it is, but provide clarifying language of what the meaning of horizontal offset is. As stated in the previous slide, the Pattern Book emphasizes the intent to preserve the natural character of a site, integrating retaining walls when necessary with other design features. Providing illustrative examples of the meaning of horizontal offset will provide clarification for applicants while still achieving the intent of the standard. The current standard for the required canopy at the primary building entrance is a minimum vertical clearance of 15 feet, with a 10% allowed adjustment to 13.5 feet minimum. The example on the left of the slide from Delta Logistics shows a canopy that is 16 feet in height. The proposed modification would increase the allowed adjustment from 10 to 20%, thus permitting a minimum canopy height of 12 feet. The illustration in the middle of this slide shows one example from Black Creek of a 12-foot entrance canopy, and another example of a 12-foot canopy from the Coffee Creek's Logistics Project on the right. In addition, this modification would add a footnote to the table at other standards, such as for the ground floor height, that are set at the 15-foot minimum, to allow corresponding reduction in the minimum height of those aspects of site design when an applicant elects to reduce the required canopy height. This modification is based on the reasoning that a canopy height of 10 to 12 feet is the standard storefront dimension, while a height above 12 feet requires a curtain-wall system, which is more expensive and likely requires custom fabrication. In addition, a lower canopy height may allow for better weather protection at the primary entrance and can facilitate interior-exterior integration and line of sight. Modifying the allowed adjustment to 20% results in a minimum canopy height of 12 feet, providing design flexibility for the applicants who prefer to use the storefront, the standard storefront dimension. With respect to base design, currently, the code provides three options for design of the base of the building to distinguish it from the base, distinguish the base from the body. Option A uses a change in material, texture, color, or finish to create a distinctive appearance in the base. Option B creates a change in surface position to protect, project the base beyond the body of the building by a minimum of one and a half inches. Option C provides landscaping to the low-berm landscape standard. Both examples in this slide, from Precision Countertops on the left and Black Creek on the right, use both a change in color or texture and a change in surface position to create this distinctive appearance. The proposed modification would clarify that any one of these design options satisfies the requirement. The reasoning for this is that allowing the applicant to choose any one of the three options was the original intent of the standard, and that having a base that's both visually and dimensionally distinct is difficult to achieve, particularly with tilt-up concrete construction. The same distinctive appearance is possible to create with material, color, texture, or finish, and this is equally effective as a dimensional design element. Staff presented the proposed modifications to Planning Commission on December 13th. Commissioners appreciated staff's judicious approach to identifying specific and limited modifications that respond to waiver requests while continuing to protect the public realm and encourage a pedestrian scale in development. They agreed that the modifications allow increased flexibility in design while staying with the intent of the Form-Based Code and vision to create a connected, high-quality employment center in Coffee Creek. The Planning Commission unanimously supported the proposed modifications. Feedback from the meeting, and from this meeting and from the presentation at Planning Commission will guide staff in drafting a package of proposed Development Code amendments. These will be presented to Planning Commission for public hearing and recommendation to City Council in February of 2024, and City Council public hearing and adoption is anticipated in March or April next year. At tonight's meeting, staff is seeking feedback from City Council responding to the questions posed on this slide. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
As someone of short stature, I, uh, when I, you were talking about CC3 on the retaining walls and the increase in the height of those walls. Can you reiterate to me what was the justification for that increase? Because, yeah, at first I thought line of sight, you know, if you're on the street, but it sounds like that's not going to be an issue, because it will not be, it will actually be more inside the location and not affecting the streets, so pedestrian traffic would not be impacted. But what, what was the justification, just that you've received so many requests?
Yes, we've had, let's see, I think we had, of the four projects, two of them had to have retaining wall waiver requests, and those were for Black Creek and for Delta Logistics. The bigger, they, they wanted to have bigger buildings that have, require a lot of site grading, and, and because there's some natural topography out there that isn't conducive to having a big, flat site on which to build a project, they needed to have quite large retaining walls. But we want to keep them at somewhat of a pedestrian scale, you know, and particularly for ones that are within the site and only the site users are going to see them.
And the cost of retaining wall in and of itself would, I would think, make the developer want to keep it as short as possible, correct?
Exactly. Yes. But we wanted to give them some flexibility to, eh, increase it a little bit, because four feet is, is pretty small for a retaining wall.
If I can look over it, it's short.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So your, your proposals make sense to me. I was a little curious about every, changing the canopy. So why would they want to, you know, raise the height of the canopy? Is it for more light into the building or sign nature?
So, the, the current standard, which is the 15 feet, is not, like, like I said, the, a standard storefront is 12 feet, and, and, you know, it's a, if you require a custom design for a taller one, it costs more money, and so that was the desire to bring it down. The integration of the exterior and the interior is just, it makes it a cleaner line of sight for people that are within the building to have that, you know, to have a higher, a, a ceiling height that's consistent with that canopy. And actually, when I interviewed, talked with the, with Black Creek, the applicant for Black Creek, they really like that it's a higher ceiling inside. They feel like it makes a lot, it, it just feels more open and airy and, and, you know, a lot of more light comes in. So we don't want to reduce it too much, but we want to make that, we want to make it possible for, for applicants to have a standard storefront size, which is that 12 feet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for those questions. Councilor Linville was not able to be here tonight, and she, I will just mention, appreciate her comments about this over time.
This particular topic, and I will just, you know, remember her and appreciate her noting that the purpose of this Form-Based Code originally was to make sure, do, you know, what can we do to make building permitting for these commercial buildings simpler, easier, more straightforward for the businesses, and also, and saves in a number of ways at the, on the city, cities' part and so forth. I'm probably simplifying that a little bit. So we went at it with, and the Planning Commission took part, and there was our best effort, but as it was put into use, we found that we were getting requests for waivers. So that brought us back, well, maybe that really does need to change so that by making these adjustments, hopefully, we've anticipated, we've given a bigger range of possibilities, but staying within a form.
Yes.
Or kind of a track of a general category of look.
Mm-hmm.
And so I appreciate the time that staff and the Planning Commission have spent looking at it, and so I, I don't have any questions. I think this has been a really thorough description. Anything from Council President Ockervoll?
Um, no, no specific questions, just one comment that the slideshow that we were able to see this evening with all of these visual picture images was terrific, illustrating what exactly we're talking about and the changes and why. So thank you so much for that, that visual examples that, that were woven into the slideshow. I thought that was really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
And that brings us to Frog Pond East and South Development Code. And we are, we have one more after that, one more topic. So, but we're on track for time.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've made it so if we need to not get through all of it, that's fine. So, uh, so Dan Polley, Planning Manager. So this evening, really, this is a continuation of our discussion back earlier this month, so I'm glad we're able to continue this in a timely manner. Really wanted to start, we won't cover all the topics we did prior, but want to take this time to come back and discuss more the minimum lot size, having no minimum lot size and how that might look, and some examples, or more illustration, explanation of how that might work. And time allowing will get in some maximum building widths and some examples of how these standards would come together and actually look on the ground. So, not having a minimum lot size with, which minimum lot size is fairly common in a lot of residential zoning. Again, historically, it's been used to enforce density maximums in a lot of jurisdictions across, probably internationally. The intent of recommending no minimum lot size in this code is first to simplify, and I'll get into that a bit more, avoiding overlapping and conflicting standards, which we actually have often seen with minimum lot size over the years, and providing flexibility, especially for smaller homes, and I'll provide some specific examples of that in the presentation tonight. Some additional considerations we didn't really talk about last time is, first of all, middle housing land divisions, and this is some technical stuff I won't get into too much, but what we're seeing at Frog Pond West is that these are being used to develop essentially units that don't really look and feel like middle housing, essentially to divide up larger detached home lots. It's a good tool to have, but a traditional, but where, where we can write a code that allows for traditional lots, for things that look and feel like detached homes, it presents more value and flexibility to future homeowners, and is also less time-consuming and costly to administer for the city and the developer. Something else to mention is, in the past, we have a waiver, waivers in our, in our, in our code that often have been requested for minimum lot size, because what we get is, there's a number of requirements to take up land, and at some point, if the math doesn't work, something has to give. And oftentimes, it's preferred to reduce, has been preferred to reduce lot size versus reducing the amount of open space or other things like that.
Say, excuse me, Dan, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yes.
On something you said a little bit ago. Were you saying that the current, maybe just want to restate this, but the current minimum lot, um, number, size, did you say that is now causing, um, housing that doesn't look like middle housing? Maybe I didn't hear that whole thing.
Yeah. So middle housing land divisions is something that came from the, a state law.
The state law, okay.
Senate Bill 851 from, was that 2019 session? And it's, it's essentially where you can take in a, a lot and further divide it to put on middle housing.
Okay, so it's that law that is causing this?
Yeah, so essentially, what we're seeing in Frog Pond West, which we expect and it's fine, where the plan had like 6,000 to 8,000 square foot lots, developers are essentially putting a detached duplex on those, which are essentially two detached homes, and then dividing that to create smaller, smaller units, smaller lots, which is supportive of the intent of the law.
Right.
But there's a lot of those circumstances.
Detached duplex. Yeah, good question. That's a new term.
So that's why we didn't actually use that term. That's one way it's referred to, in our code, we actually call it cluster housing, but it's not cottage cluster. Essentially, what it means is two detached units, like two homes on one lot.
Single-family homes.
Two single-family homes on one lot.
Not connected.
Not connected.
So that's a detached duplex.
Is it because they started with one owner of the lot? Is that why it's called that?
Yeah, we actually call it cluster housing in our code, because we don't like the term detached duplex either. So.
Okay, so the people, because of the middle housing law that was passed in the 2019 legislature.
Correct.
Um, we are seeing developers, um, starting with a certain lot and then dividing it into two and building a smaller home there on each side.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So when they do that, so, so is that like you have a single family and then you have an accessory dwelling, or are they actually subdividing the lot into two parcels?
You can do it either way using that. So what we've typically seen in Frog Pond West, don't want to dwell on this too much, is that, and happy to show you examples offline, and essentially, they have a lot that maybe is 8,000 square feet, let's say, and so they just divide that into and put two units on it.
Or it could be a house and ADU.
So now there's two lots.
And they, yeah, so essentially, functionally, there's two lots. And so that, that relates to what we're talking about here, because even if you have a, a minimum lot size, you're going to end up with smaller functional lots anyway because of the middle housing land division. So one benefit of not having a lot size is that that middle housing land division, which can be a useful tool for like a cottage cluster or something like that, where you want to sell those, those homes around the courtyard separately, is really limited to those situations where it is like a cottage cluster or true middle housing, if you will, and not a tool to essentially create smaller lots anyway.
Okay. Why don't you try that one more time?
Okay.
We really want to get this.
Yes, so I don't have an illustration up here, and trust me, I understand that this is hard to understand, because it is counterintuitive to how, how things have been done historically with this new law. So if you have a 5,000, let's say you set a So if you have a 5,000, let's say you set a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and that's like a 50 by 100 lot, what the middle housing land division code would, allows you to do is essentially build two side-by-side houses on that 5,000 square foot lot, and then sell them separately with their own land.
It's almost like townhouses.
Almost like townhouses, or detached townhouses, yeah. And the difference is, is that those child lots, if you will, from the middle housing land division, don't have to meet like zoning standards independently. You're still applying the overall like setbacks and everything to that larger parent lot. And so you end up, so it's a way, and that can be applied a number of ways. You could do it if you have a true duplex on the lot, let's say, you can put that property line, zero lot line essentially down the middle of the duplex and sell each side of the duplex separately for more affordable ownership opportunity. Or if you put an ADU in the backyard, you can actually divide off that ADU and sell it separately.
So you just mentioned setbacks, and you said setbacks for the parent lot. Does that mean no setbacks for the child lot?
So on the exterior of the parent lot, so if you have those two homes on the lot, so the sides of the, the sides that face the parent lot line have to meet setback, but the setback in between, that's kind of that internal line, wouldn't have to meet zoning setbacks.
Okay, got it. And the problem that would cause, describe the negative of that, please.
So essentially, you get a similar, you could, not having minimum lot size, you, you could get a similar result, like those same size of units would be built, but you'd have the actual setbacks in between. And in addition, there's more flexibility for that future and more clarity for that future owner, because just like the council and pretty much everyone I talked to about this, they're like, what? What are you talking about? You know, it's going to be difficult for a future homeowner to really understand, you have kind of a, you have a quasi lot, you might call it, where it's mostly a lot, but not like a true lot, which limits your ability, like you can't put an ADU on one of those where you could on a standard traditionally created lot, because it's already essentially considered middle housing, and you couldn't add an ADU to middle housing. And also, and that, and just the existence of it independently offers more flexibility in the future.
For the, so...
For the owner, and also, you don't have to do a plat, like two plats at one time when you actually create the lots. So there's some benefits from kind of administrative standpoint there.
So I'm understanding you have, you would end up with this proposal, the way that you're describing it, it is adjusting for an unintended consequence of the middle housing law in some ways.
It's essentially adjusting for the middle housing land division law to be used in the way that was intended.
Yeah.
And we've already controlled for it some by saying you can't create, the lots actually have to be like a lot smaller than a standard lot to do a middle housing land division. But still, it, it creates a clear process that we know if a developer wants to build a house of a certain size and it meets goals that the city has of having more availability of smaller units, then not having a minimum lot size supports that. And I, I'll show you some examples here.
Okay, so, yeah, I was actually thinking in Newburgh, they're building these very small shotgun homes right next to each other, zero lot lines. Is, is that what we're talking about? Is something along that line?
Well, this would apply to all sorts of housings, and I think maybe if I show you the examples, it'll, it'll be a bit clearer, so let's...
I think the zero lot line is when they share a wall, there's no yard in between.
Are you talking about the developments just like right near the bypass?
Yes.
I hope we don't get that.
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to clarify, the zero lot line is when you have a true duplex.
Right.
Right? And they, they share a wall, but each house, each owner owns the ground under their house.
Correct.
But they share a wall.
Right.
That's what zero is, yeah. That, I've driven by that, I don't think anyone, I don't know anyone who would want that, no.
And so, and that's why, I mean, that's why separately, we have architectural design standards and things like that.
Okay, so let's, thank you for taking some questions at the beginning. I'm now ready for, this is, this is really a bit of an oxymoron term, and so it does require some extra time.
Yes, so thank you. And it's a useful tool, but it's a new tool that is a little counterintuitive then, to some extent. So one way I have found it useful, and in our Planning Commission discussion where they ended up supportive of, of the concept we're looking at, is that we're looking to fit the lot to the house rather than the house to the lot, because overall, this is a housing master plan where we're trying to create housing. We're not here to create lots and then try to fit a house onto the lot. So that's a little subtle difference, but I'll show you what I, what I mean by that. So I think it's useful to compare with and without minimum lot size examples. The first example I'll use is a typical smaller home that you might find in Vilbois. It's about a 1,500 square foot house, three bedroom, two bath, which you'd find like all over, like especially on the east side of Vilbois. Another example is, I have a prototype I pulled off online, which is a two-story, 1,000 square foot house with about a 600 square foot footprint. So with a minimum lot size, this, this first example, where, let's assume for our example, that the minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet. So essentially, what the developer would do, they see, okay, that's our minimum size, that's our dimensions, they look, they look in their house plans and say, yeah, I have a house that can fit there and meet the setbacks. And so they have to fit, or if they don't, they have to design a new house that fits in that lot. How it would help, so let's take that, without a minimum lot size, that same house, first of all, you'd kind of build the lot around the house. So you take that house, this is a house that we know, I'm a developer, and I know this house is something I've designed that fits well for this market, and so I'll apply the front setback, I'll apply the side setbacks, and in this case, I'm going to want a driveway in the back on the alley, so going to put a space for a car in the back, and that's my lot size. So there's no necessarily minimum, but it really fits the house. So in, in that scenario, essentially what you're getting, you're getting the same lot, but having that separate minimum lot size standard really doesn't create any benefit. And that's what we're seeing as we look at this, is without, is we're not really seeing a benefit for, in our standard situation, you're not seeing a benefit to having a minimum lot size. And then really, we look, then is there a barrier if you're trying to create more attainable housing, a smaller unit that's more attainable? So let's look at that. So this is a scenario, same lot, 3,000 square foot lot, but now you have that smaller home. There's a well-designed 600 square foot footprint, 1,000 square foot house, two bedroom, one bath, which all of our studies are showing is, is something that could be more attainable and also serve a lot of the demographic. So in reality, a developer want to put it on this lot with the cost of land, a developer want to do it, because you're, you're spending too much money on the land compared to the price point you're able to sell the house. So then in this scenario, you apply the front setback, the side setbacks, and in this case, maybe you're not putting a driveway. You could put a driveway, but unless, driveways aren't required, so...
Give him a driveway.
So...
Gee.
So what you end up with, I mean, your lot size is 1,375 square feet, things that we've observed, is more efficient use of land and more housing options, because we are about providing more housing options. So, you know, in the Frog Pond, we want these small house options, but we also have those more standard-sized house options. What also I know here is the lot coverage is more what you typically see for a detached home versus trying to put a tiny house, or I wouldn't even call it tiny, kind of the smaller house or cottage on a traditional minimum lot, you're going to be a low lot, a lot coverage percentage, which means a developer's, again, not likely to do that and use that much land for...
Not, yeah, that doesn't attract, that doesn't fit their business model.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so then, in this, you kind of see in the background, the dark gray would be that minimum lot size that you might have, and then what lot size depending on whether or not you want to put the optional driveway, you may end up with. And honestly, you'd probably end up with optional driveway because of, you're going to have a standard depth on a block, but, you know, depending on the depth of the lot and things.
So before you move on from this, you're...
This is a great place to stop and discuss kind of this minimum lot size concept for not having it. I, I would also comment that we would put language in the code, it's clear, there's already language elsewhere in the code, but we'd add it in this section as well. To make it clear, you can't create a lot that you can't put a house on, right? So you can't like create the world's smallest park.
It has to address, in other words, if you could talk about some of the other standards that are already in the code that in effect do create a minimum lot size.
Correct.
Could you talk about that a little bit? What, what are we starting with?
Yeah, so which is essentially, again, is that overlapping standard that you don't really need it. So you start with the fact that you have your house, and houses need to be certain dimensions, I mean, building code ends up pushing different dimensions and standard what's, what people want in terms of, you know, the width of a bathroom, the width of a hallway, the width of a kitchen, right? That kind of drives the, the floor plan. And then from there, you have your setbacks. So you start putting those setbacks around to create the buffer around whatever that floor plan is, and that's, and you also, when you, we're talking, we're showing examples of detached homes here, but when you start talking about townhouses, you're also getting at that maximum building width, which is going to drive how many units you have and how big that, all the lots together for that townhouse can be. And so you're getting that concern about like white narrow or space between buildings, setbacks and kind of those aesthetics from the street. You also still have all of your design standards for the front of the house, but then you're not putting on this other standard that's just forcing land that may not actually be needed to meet all those other standards. Also, you have your lot coverage, which is the, again, the percent of the lot that can be covered by buildings, also you have to meet, which helps drive the lot size.
So is it because there's no parking requirements? That's one of the key factors, it looks like, right?
I mean...
So now you can do a smaller lot, or you have your house, but you don't need as much land around it, because you're not providing for parking, therefore you can make the lot smaller.
I think they're really separate topics, because in, in this example you see here, the actually example house plan has a tuck-under parking spot, which even if we required parking for a long time for detached homes, our required parking is one space per unit, and that's, so you, you could, so even if you had required parking...
We do require parking.
You'd have, you can, you just want to make sure that space for the parking is on the lot, but then you want to have to add extra land just because there's this other number in the code.
So could I, I was just thinking about the language that you were just using, and words count for a lot. So I think we hear from people a lot, and we agree that we don't, and we've, we just talked about this in the Form Based Code thing, that we do not want to, we want to do what we can to avoid complicated scenarios that require developers and homeowners and city staff to spend more time wrangling over overlapping rules.
Correct.
And I don't think there's anybody who would really, you know, the idea of saying no minimum lot size is not something that appeals to me, probably not to too many people, that term.
Right.
I don't know that that term is really necessary. Is there another way, because I don't know that that really is true with what we're saying, because there is a minimum lot size inherent to the code.
It's just not required.
So however, just a second.
It's just not specified, right.
Just a second, if I could. So could we, could we say that lots must be sufficiently sized to accommodate this and this and this? And identify some of the, in that, some of the structural requirements that are already in the code that are some of the things you've just described. So minimum lot size shall be that which meets all of these structural requirements.
Yeah, so certainly in kind of outreach and in, in, in discussion of the topic as we go through the public hearing process, we can say, we can present it like that.
Isn't that true?
That is true. And in the code, we actually just, it, it's, it's not even listed, right? We don't say, you know, there's not a line in the code that says no minimum lot size, right?
Well, I think this is a terminology that is going to get us very confused, and I do not want to use that terminology. I think it will cause a lot of confused conversations, because I don't think it's even correct that there's such a thing. I, I would like you to consider a different way of describing it.
Certainly.
Anyway, go ahead.
So when you were explaining this, and by the way, you did a really great job of this. So I kept thinking about Louis Sullivan, who, he was Frank Lloyd Wright's partner, and he came up with the term form follows function.
Uh huh.
And this just kept coming back to me as you were saying that. So if we're trying to get into middle housing and we need these smaller footprint homes, the form of the, of the land follows the function of the property that you're laying in there.
Correct.
So I don't know if there's a way that we can elegantly say that.
How about functional lot size?
Functional lot size.
Something like that.
There you go. There you go.
Good job. Do you like that?
I like it much better. I think the other one just creates a blockade to comprehension.
It seems, it just seems more clear, and it has a more positive ring. When you have the word no in something, it's kind of like, puts up a wall.
Yeah, understood.
Good job. And I appreciate the idea that we are not sort of wasting land and, or charging people, you know, creating a minimum price for a house that isn't necessary.
Or creating houses of a size that become not affordable to those individuals who are just entering the market for the very first time.
Yeah.
Because the builder, the developer builder needs to do that in order to justify the use, the efficient use of that land.
I think we'll see over, I mean, I would anticipate that over the space of the build-out of master, of the master plan, like I think in the early phases, it probably won't make much of a difference, because the builders are going to have their standard, standard houses that they've built elsewhere that they'll bring in and put on this and build, you know, build the setbacks around and get substantially the same lot size. But then, in the future, you may have someone that wants to do, be creative, and as the market changes, do something more creative and have the flexibility to do that and deliver something that we've been looking for.
Sorry, I just noticed the clock, and I didn't hear from Council President Ockervale on this yet, so I'd like to hear from you if you'd like to, and then we should go on. Can we move on after that, Dan, to transit-oriented development?
Yeah, so I, this, getting through minimum lot size is what my hope was tonight.
Form function, what is it?
Functional lots.
Functional lot size. Getting through the functional lot size. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Council President Ockervale, anything to add?
No, I think this, this conversation was really good. I'm so glad. Thank you all.
Okay.
I, I, that, that last piece that you said, Dan, about allowing, if somebody comes along with some creativity, you know, I mean, that's, that's what Wilsonville always is trying to look for and encourage and, and foster. And so I like that we are making a change that will allow that creativity to happen, because a lot of times that's where the good new ideas... because a lot of times that's where the good new ideas come from, right? Is somebody that has a little bravery and imagination to do things just a little bit differently.
Wonderful. Great way to conclude. All right, thank you, Dan.
Mayor, I'm, I may note, Kim Rybold and I are the ones that are covering the next item. I'm not sure we need 25 minutes for it.
Okay.
So I don't know how long Dan's maximum building width section will take, but you know, if it's another 10 minutes, you're probably fine.
Okay.
I could do it pretty quick because we've started talking about it already and I don't have to show all the examples.
Very good.
But I appreciate, so to confirm, I under, as long as we call it functional lot size, we're good with moving forward with, with designing a code around that concept. Okay, I'm seeing head nods. All right, so I mean, really what it comes down to on the width is let me just again go through what it, the idea behind the width is that where we're allowing all the different product types, that we will get multifamily and townhouse buildings mixed in with these different buildings and having with, with detached homes and cottages and that there's a differentiation and a limit of how wide that building can be because, and really that matches that, those different forms and what we're anticipating and what the master plan anticipates in those other forms. We've looked a lot at precedence of what that would be and really think this was a key differentiation between the forms. But one thing I wanted to bring up about it that's come up in conversation is do we really need it fully detached? This comes up mostly, and imagine this is a three-story building, this is a good example without trees blocking it, but it is a four-story building where generally we'll be applying this to three-story, is if articulation, if you have enough articulation, is that good enough versus having the buildings truly separated in terms of, because the whole notion is you're not having too large of a facade along a street. So that's one concept that we're looking at based on feedback from our development community. Again, we want to not accidentally create barriers to housing that we want to have happen. And if we're looking at kind of win-win situations where if you can do articulation to break up the facade enough without, you know, costing you much more money than, you know, while creating, providing the housing that we're saying we want, then it's a good thing. So other than that, we're still looking at keeping those lengths. And again, I want to just kind of put that all together and what you might see. And again, in urban form one, block length, such as this example from the Village Center, in urban form two, a little further back, up to six or seven townhouses or similarly sized multifamily building. And then in urban form three, a little further setback and a little narrower, where you get more closer to that feel of a traditional detached, single-family neighborhood. So that minimalized, so that's all I wanted to share tonight. There's more, we'll get back to like side yard setbacks and things like that in future work sessions, but.
So are you looking for comments on this?
Yeah, if there's any additional comments, because I know we didn't really, this is one I think is pretty low hanging fruit. Is there any concern about working on, putting forward this minimum or maximum building width standard in the code?
I think, I like the articulation that you just described.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll repeat myself. I think the articulation works. I have no issues with this.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Council President Ockervall? She's good.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. I agree as well. And now we'll move to last item on our work session, which is the transit oriented development financing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Amanda Guile, Henman City Attorney, and I'm here with Kim Rybold, our plant, planning manager?
Senior planner.
Okay. While she's pulling up the PowerPoint here for us.
Yeah, give me just one moment. Okay, the slide should be coming up here. Here we go. All right, well, I will start things off really quick with just a brief update on the project since it's been a while since we've been in front of council. And then once I am through with that piece, Amanda will talk a little more about the resolution that is on the agenda this evening at your regular meeting. So this will advance forward, there we go. The transit oriented development housing project is one that was born out of the city's equitable housing strategic plan in 2020. We fielded a lot of ideas during that planning process, but this was one that was really popular and of interest among participants in that project, particularly because it had the ability to really have a high impact on providing an affordable housing product within the city of Wilsonville, close to our existing transit facilities. And so this is that small vacant piece of land that is just south of where the bus bays are, just to the north of Barber Street, and it's been just vacant this whole time. And there's a large parking lot there that is owned by TriMet for the park and ride facility, but underutilized. And this was really seen as a big opportunity to provide transit oriented affordable housing and activate that space. What the study recommended that the city do was to conduct a development opportunity study to look at what would be feasible there, talk with some housing developers, get a general insight of what might actually be feasible and able to be built. And then if we, you know, came up with something that the council was interested in and seemed like it might be feasible, that we actually go forward with a solicitation process for a development partner. So in 2021, we did just that. We had some conversations with the city council about what was the vision for the site, what was important to see here. And the result of that conversation was that we, the council expressed a preference for maximizing the amount of affordable housing that could be developed here, but recognized that the creation of a vibrant ground floor space was also important. And so the development concept that came out of that process was a five-story building with a space for a smart transit center, a space for Wilsonville community sharing, preservation of some of the existing mature Douglas fir trees that are on the site, and utilization of the existing park and ride lot, park and ride lot for some shared parking opportunities. And this became the basis from which we went through a two-step developer solicitation process in 2022 to see who might be able to help carry out this vision. And so approximately a year ago, the city council selected Palindrom as the preferred development partner for this project. So since that time, the city team has been working with them to refine development plans for the site, which currently has 121 units. It's a mix of unit sizes, but really emphasizing the two and three bedroom units, which are more family-sized units, approximately 65% of the units in the project will be of that size. There will be a range of affordability levels between 30 and 80% of area median income. And so that was one of the things that was really important to the council as well was ensuring that we could provide some more deeply affordable units. The project will also include the active ground floor uses that the city was seeking. And so in addition to that smart space and a Wilsonville community sharing space, there will also be kind of a mixed coffee house slash taproom that is part of the proposed project. So where we're at now, the development team has been working on putting together their funding package for the project. We were fortunate in that due to some of our prior communications with Clackamas County, their housing authority, we are receiving approximately $8 million in Metro bond funds through Clackamas County. So that is really excellent. The development team is also working on some funding applications with the state. And so once we get through that process, I think we'll have a better sense of what the project timing is moving forward. But I think there's a lot of excitement about this project. We will be working through the land use application here in the next couple of months. And so hopefully setting ourselves up to go into construction permitting for the project not long thereafter. So with that, I will turn it over to Amanda to talk a little more about some of the financing items on the city side that have come up related to SDCs.
Unless you have questions about status of the project.
I will note that we can, we can attempt to answer questions. We are, but to be mindful for the council that this is going to be a development application that could come before you, so we are trying to limit how much information we share that might relate to the development application.
Because we will be voting on it later.
Potentially.
Yep.
I mean.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, but it's only on appeal that you would be, that it'd come before you, but, yeah. So any questions on?
Well, I appreciate that, I think this is a good plan. The, you know, every, every week we read about fallout of the increased cost of housing, the increasing rents and things that are happening to people who, whose jobs will not accommodate increasing rent. And I'm saying that just to reinforce the importance of building this building. And here is, I think, a very smart way to keep it going on track.
Right. So with that, going into some of the project funding and our systems development charges, when this project was first being rolled out to the development community, there was a general understanding that the city would be looking at a partial subsidy of its, of its systems development charges related to the affordable multifamily units. And so that is, I think we've heard pretty much across the board, that is something that is necessary to make the funding work for this, the financing work for this. And so as the council knows, our parks SDCs are set to increase by, on January 1st. We had initially anticipated that this would, this could potentially have already been through the development application process and so wouldn't be subject to this increase. That's not the case because of some of these other funding issues that we're, that we're working with the, the team through. So with that increase, we're looking at an additional $425,000 approximately that we're adding to the project cost because of the Parks SDC increase. So that was not, this wasn't anticipated, you know, a couple of years ago when we really started this project and, and something that we flagged as an issue. So that's what the resolution is tonight before you, is to lock in those park, the current Parks SDC rate for the multifamily units at the rate it is now, and thus it wouldn't be subject to the increase that goes into effect January 1st. This is not, this lock-in rate that we're talking about is not applicable to other developments in the community. It's specifically tied to this affordable multifamily project. It's also not applicable to other uses in the project. So Kim talked about some of that ground floor activation. This lock-in rate would only be applicable to the affordable multifamily units. And it's also not applicable to other systems development charges. So those rates aren't being impacted by this. It's really tied to the parks rate. So this is a very, this is a very narrowly tailored resolution at a specific issue regarding funding. And we've talked with our parks team about this. They've, we've gotten the okay from both them and the consultant that worked on the SDC rate increase about the impact to the SDC, the Parks SDCs if, by council potentially taking this action. And they confirmed that it doesn't undo any of the work that was done as part of that, that project.
And I think you just said this, but just to reiterate, it does not set a precedent for a future, you know, any other projects.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep, it's only for this project and only the Parks SDCs and only on the multifamily units. So it's the narrowest of the narrow.
Any questions or comments?
No, I'm pleased we're moving forward.
With this, after meeting with the folks at Palindrom, when they had their meeting with the community members, seeing the potential of this TOD become a reality, I think is really important and to move expeditiously to get it done, I think is critical to our community, especially those individuals who are income stressed. I know that the TOD is bringing in 121 units and I'm pleased that they're one, two, and three bedroom. It doesn't appear that they have any studio units, is that correct from what I saw?
There is a limited number of studio units.
Very limited number. That's what I recall from Palindrom too.
Yes.
And I'm pleased that the city leaders, this before I joined council, did significant due diligence on the potential partner with Palindrom and chose a partner that has a really great track record in being able to build and, and really manage these facilities and understand what they're doing. I think specifically the recent media attention about the failure of the Burey Building in Portland for some low-income housing and the nightmare that it's created, really creates continued importance of paying attention to who our partner is on any low-income assisted type of housing.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments, so I think looks like we've got thumbs up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, well, that concludes our work session and we will adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
at 7:00 PM. Good evening. I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on December 18th at 7:01 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council President Ockerwal?
Here.
Counselor Linville? Counselor Berry?
Present.
Counselor Dunwell?
Here.
Mary Fitzgerald?
Here.
Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will ask, I am going to ask for a motion to approve the following order of agenda with an amendment to move the, just a second, I'm just looking at this. The communications segment, I think after counselor comments.
So Mayor, you would have a motion to amend the agenda to move the communications item to after counselor comments? And once that's approved, then before?
You think that would be enough time?
I think, I think.
What we're trying to do is allow some commuting.
As the mayor of Wilson?
Yes.
I think you want to move it before mayor's business.
Like make it the next thing, right?
Well, no, we understood he wouldn't be able to get here that soon. He's scheduled for 7:25 PM, and I think the idea was that was too early.
Yes, it was between 7:30 and 8:00 he would be here.
That's right, because they had that meeting.
Their county, yeah.
So to guess on that, could we suggest after counselor, or after or in the middle of counselor comments?
Couldn't they just do it, the mayor has the flexibility that when he shows up, you could just move it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Could the city attorney please describe this motion? And then somebody could say, "I so move," please?
Okay, so I think the motion would be to amend the agenda to move the communications section to coincide with the counselor comments. So we'll handle that one first.
Thank you.
I so move.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. May I have, now I need a motion?
You have to have them vote.
Oh. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And then a motion to approve the amended agenda.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended has been made by Counselor Dunwell and seconded by Counselor Berry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Okay, so that brings us to mayor's business. And first off tonight, I have a number of appointments and reappointments of community volunteers who serve on city boards and commissions. And as I've said, each time we do this, we are really fortunate to have so many community members who want to participate in local government and dedicate a lot of time, study, and thought to serving on these committees. We do not have enough seats any time in the last couple of years to accommodate everyone. And sometimes it, people apply a couple of times and, and finally an opening comes up in their area of interest. So really appreciate everyone. And I would like to ask if, Council President Ockerwal, would you like to read the motion?
Sorry, one sec, I will. One second, I'll pull up the text. Okay, thank you. So my first motion, I move to ratify the appointment of Nadine Albitar to the Arts, Cultural, and Heritage Commission for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Christopher Moore to the Budget Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Tabby Tropper and Tyler Beach to the Budget Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of John Andrews and Megan Chinard to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025.
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Cameron Mesba to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of David Silha, Trey Tracy Hester, and Fei Gaipong Porter to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Justin Brown to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Carolina Wild to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of George Luo and Asha Patel to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of John Michael Bowlen and Adrian Schritzmer, Meyer to the Kiddekata Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Karen Kreitzer to the Kiddekata Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Second it.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Bill Bagnall and Paul Diller to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2027.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. I will note for the record that we want to insert the word recreation into that motion in the, in the written form. It was read with the word. Thank you. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of Jennifer Willard to the Planning Commission for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2027.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Got two more.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Matt Constantine, Sam Skoll, and Yana Semenova to the Planning Commission for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2027.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the appointment of Lynn Sanders to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2026.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. So thank you, Council President Ockerwal, for reading all those motions and also to our, our volunteers for the time that they serve and the work they produce. So a couple of notes on activities I've been involved in since our last meeting on December 4th. I attended the Washington County Coordinating Meeting, and that is the cities in Washington County. We have a small bit of land in Washington County, and we always want someone to attend those meetings and represent Wilsonville. And of course, we're also in Clackamas County, and the corollary to the Washington County Committee, Coordinating Committee is, is called the C4 Committee. And there are a couple of things those two committees have in common. In the Washington County Coordinating Meeting, we had a discussion among the different city representatives, some mayors and some city councilors discussing prioritizing the future major streets transportation improvement projects due to road cost escalation, which is resulting in fewer projects that can be accomplished at these higher costs. So what we experience in Wilsonville is happening across the board. And Washington County has a specific road tax that, that allows these projects, but they are having to really look at that to decide which ones make sense to go forward. We also heard a report from Metro staff about the new 2024 Urban Growth Report that projects housing and employment lands needs over the next 20 years. And as you probably all know, cities are required to study this and, and project where and how housing can be built. And it was really interesting to hear the kind of work that Metro did. They survey the whole area, look at topography, buildable areas, unbuildable areas, in ownership of land, so that they have a, a pretty good idea of what could be possible. And they reported that at this time, the only metro area city that has indicated interest in a potential urban growth boundary expansion is Sherwood. And this is a, you know, somewhat of a concern because of the great need for housing that we have. And in Wilsonville, we are, our staff is really busy, as you know from the conversation that we just had earlier at the work session, planning for how housing will develop in Frog Pond East and South, urban growth boundary expansion areas, and as well as finishing Frog Pond West and Villebois Neighborhood Developments. You know, the voters, this, this is also something to, this, this housing is connected to a housing bond that the voters passed in recent years that helped to build some housing for people in middle and lower incomes. And I just got a report that was just distributed by Metro about how that housing construction bond has been playing out. Because across this whole area, communities are just struggling with having enough safe and affordable homes for everybody. And the most recent data from the National Low Income Housing Coalition shows that we are short 90,000 homes for households making 50% or less of the area median income, which happens to be, according to this report, about 56,400 for a family of four. And in Wilsonville, you know, you heard that we're working on the transit-oriented development and see that moving along in the next, in next few months to a year. You'll also hear about the Wilsonville Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis. You'll also hear about the Wilsonville Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis that came to our City Council several months ago. That was brought up at a recent public meeting that the Planning Commission had invited people to attend and hear some of the work that's being done on that by Eco Northwest. So, the City Council is going to hear more about that as the data continues to be developed. The, I also, a lot of us also attended the Joint Transportation Committee Subcommittee Hearing of the Legislature that was held here in City Hall in Wilsonville. And it was the, really the biggest event over the past week, and there was a tremendous turnout. I think we had 150 area residents for this hearing on tolling. And again, it was a hearing put on by the Oregon Legislature's Joint Committee Subcommittee on Transportation Planning. There was a very good tone of the meeting and people stepping up and giving their opinions. I'm not saying that they were, they were very frank with their opinions about how the tolling plans that we have heard about may affect this area. And so, based on a legislative direction, the Oregon Department of Transportation is working on plans right now to toll I-5 and I-205 as a way to generate highway improvement revenue and to manage traffic congestion. So, the focus of this particular hearing as published was, what is the impact of this potential tolling on local residents with limited alternative routes? What is the impact on public transportation? And the impact on proximity to retirement communities? Our city testimony happened to, you know, we raised concerns. We had a very detailed written testimony that we submitted with, that I really appreciate all the work staff helped me with on that. Lots of information that we wanted to get into the legislative record. We only had a four-minute period of time to testify, so just talked about some of the highlights of that written testimony. One of the biggest things we talked about is the unique way that Wilsonville is negatively affected by tolling. And that is that when Charbonneau was built in the 70s, it was built with the understanding that that community would rely on using the freeway for local access. As we all know, that's how it works. And so, the Charbonneau neighborhood of Wilsonville, Wilsonville City Council, State Representative Neron, State Senator Aaron Woods, and others have been very active in advocating for a tolling for Wilsonville residents and businesses that need to cross the Boone Bridge. So, we made a big point of that. And we were joined by quite a few other people, residents. Also, Councilor Linville testified verbally. Many of our neighbors in the Charbonneau neighborhood and elsewhere in and around Wilsonville testified. We also had the Mayor of Tualatin here, the Mayor of Lakos Wego, the Mayor of Canby, and many other individuals who provided testimony. So, our point was, it really does not seem fair or equitable for ODOT to penalize Charbonneau residents and businesses with highway tolls just to use the I-5 bridge. I think we made that point very clear. We also made a point, and I said in my testimony, that we hope that the legislature, as they conduct this pause on tolling, they will take a serious look at alternative methods of funding the highway construction funding needs that plague our state. And of course, right next door to us, it is the Boone Bridge, which I think is half a billion-dollar price tag. And that, to be effective, needs to have the southbound auxiliary lane. We don't want to rebuild the same exact bridge and have the same problems that we do. And we also want to have a pedestrian bike access across the river, as we've described before. As we approach the winter holidays, there are a couple of, nope, I'm going to, I covered that. I will say that our next City Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 4th, at 2024, starting at 7:00 PM. So, we will now go to our communications. No, we're not going to do that. We'll go to citizen input. Do we have anyone wanting to present at citizens' input? Let's now go to Councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Akervall.
I'm going to flip over real quick to some of my notes. Okay. So, tonight I wanted to briefly talk about a meeting that actually Zoe Monburt and I had with the Lowry second graders last month in November. And I believe I mentioned that we were meeting with the Lowry second graders. But since then, I have received some letters from them and wanted to share the content of those letters with the rest of council. So, again, when we met with the second grade students at Lowry, our meeting was to explain the structure of local government here in Wilsonville, to talk about what's handled by local government, and talk about the important roles that the public plays, that staff and council plays, that we all have our unique roles, and that it is important that we are all participating. We talked about the importance of civic engagement with the students. And the letters that were written by these second grade students are just fantastic. They have been archived by staff, if the rest of council is interested in seeing them. But I will kind of give a summary as well here tonight. So, there was a lot of reflection in the letters about some of the skills and traits that are needed for leadership. Stellan and so many other students really talked about the importance of kindness, and I was very happy to read that. Jude and other students talked about the need to be flexible. Livia talked about the importance of acting respectfully when we're all working together. Aria talked about the importance of honesty. Caleb, Evelyn, Malia, they emphasized that this work requires good planning and problem-solving. And Paul, Katie, Ren, William, Marley, and Madeline talked about the importance of listening. And Olivia reminded us that we can make the city better by listening to kids. June talked about that this role requires us to be, her quote was, "a caring community hero to everyone every day," and reminded us to do that. Zephyr said that if they were on council, they would have to be brave. Some of the students talked about actions that everyone can do that will help the city. So, June, Mika, and Silas reminded us that we can make the city better by helping pick up trash and not littering, keeping our city clean. And Madeline and Myla both said that they can also be a leader and help the city. Several students talked about challenges, and I thought their reflections and their wisdom was particularly noteworthy. Jude talked about the challenge of having to remember so many things. And Ren said, "Sometimes you have to make big choices." Lily mentioned that sometimes it requires that we make decisions that not all people will like. And William said that our role is to help work out arguments. Evelyn said that there are a lot of responsibilities, and there are. Armani said that sometimes there are small problems that turn into big problems, and that is true. There were some comments about what these students would like to see in the city. Let's see, I believe it was Manilani said that they would like to see more schools. And Myla, Frankie, Malia, and Remi all talked about more museums, interest in having more museums in Wilsonville. And Alora mentioned more little free libraries. I liked that one. Aubrey, Lynn, Ivy, and Remi all talked about the need for housing for homeless. And Jude, Penelope, Olive, Alora, Cole, Leyland, Thomas, and Frankie, this was a popular topic. They all talked about new parks, interest in new parks. And Zephyr and Cameron specifically noted an interest of more playgrounds. And Beckett talked about more nature areas, wanting to have more nature areas in Wilsonville. Noah had some comments about that we need to allow for new ways of transportation, that we can operate with our body like a bike. There were comments about needing to have infrastructure for electric cars. And Sebastian mentioned hydrogen buses. Lots of discussion, actually, during our meeting about transportation needs. Riley feels that the city would be better with more bike lanes. And Sebastian also noted, "Thanks for making the transit center bike paths, parks, and houses." And Archer and Riker both talked about the need for more streets and emergency response. And the last idea or comment that I wanted to share is from Paulina, and I hadn't heard about this idea before, but I think that she might be on to something. And her idea was one for, well, she termed it "a Christmas train" that could ride, that people could ride around the neighborhood and eat Christmas cookies. And I thought that's, maybe we could do some sort of a holiday, talk with Smart, a holiday bus, lighting, look at Christmas lights. I like the cookie idea. I think, I think there could be something there. So, just fun, great information from these students, and wanted to thank them and share all of their wisdom and their reflection with you all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President Akervall. Looks like we're going to continue to have people to apply for the boards and commissions. Okay, I will now go to Councilor Linville.
Your Honor, I don't really have a voice this evening, so I am going to excuse myself, and I have no counselor comments for this evening.
I understand. Thank you for metering out your time as you're recovering from a cold. And that brings us to Counselor Berry. Hope you feel better, Counselor Linville.
Thank you. Let's see, on December 13th, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee. And that committee meets, it's the members of the different cities within Clackamas County, so that they can get together and have an opportunity to discuss issues that impacts all, each city, and have discussions so that we can align ourselves when we need to present a unified voice. And so, that, I was really impressed that on the next day, I also attended the hearing, and that a lot of the representatives from the C4 Subcommittee were also there. I want to commend your presentation that you gave, and also Counselor Linville. And I also thought that the chairman handled the hearing really well, that I was really impressed there were so many people attending. A lot of people are very, very concerned about the issue that was being presented in tolling, and I thought she just ran an excellent meeting, so I was glad that I was able to attend. And then coming up, on December 19th, the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, DEI, is hosting Las Posadas event at the library here in Wilsonville. Las Posadas is a global nine-day event during December that highlights the virtues of unity, hospitality, faith, through the biblical story of Mary and Joseph's journey to Bethlehem in search of shelter. Throughout Las Posadas, the nightly celebrations reenact the nativity story, features pinatas and rich assortment of food, music, and holiday tradition. So, the DEI Committee's Las Posadas celebration includes light refreshments, music, and other surprises to delight the guests of all ages, and I hope that you'll attend.
Great, thank you. Counselor Dunwell.
Today, I attended the Willamette Falls and Landing National Heritage Area Monthly Meeting, and there was a really exciting movement going forward on the preamble for the bill that we would like to place in front of Congress. And we did go ahead and approve the preamble as it's stated right now. I would like to credit Greg Leo and Mark Ottenad and some of our own folks here tied to Wilsonville, who are also participating in this, who have played a really significant role in making sure that we continue momentum. That stretch, I think it's like 35 miles, isn't it, Mark? It's a significant stretch of river that will not only benefit our neighbors in Weslin and Oregon City, but all the way up to the Heritage Landing area at, beyond the Boonville area and, you know, all the way to Champouie, I believe, and to the actual, the actual facility there. So, very excited that where our momentum is starting back up again. The other, the other exciting event that happened today, I was made aware that Mark has done a fantastic job of working with the, with the board. And we are actually going to have our retreat here next week, or next month in January, not next week, yeah, I won't be here, next month in January, here at City Hall. So, I would invite others to, you know, at least stop by and say hi. I'm not sure where we're going to be in City Hall upstairs, so the board will, we will get to host all of the board members. And then finally, you know, with the holidays coming, I'm sort of a, I'm a victim, I must say, sometimes of craft shows and all of these great events that happen around the holidays, and I go to them and spend money. I was like, why did I buy this? But, on Saturday, I happened to stop by Ordnance Brewing, a local business here in Wilsonville, and they were having a craft show during, before their opening hours. And I got to meet Christopher Chitola Hart, a name that must be very familiar to some of you. He is retired art teacher from Wilsonville High, and we talked significantly about the arts, our Arts Commission and everything that we're doing in Wilsonville to support the arts. And so, super exciting to remember what we have in our own city, and talk about what that future can be in supporting our own arts. So, what I did, and I want to present these to you, I have some at home for those that are here. I wanted to just present to everybody a couple of little holiday gifts that are some of his work. And so, Mayor, this one's for you. Counselor, this one is for you.
Thank you.
And just some beautiful prints that he had that, and like I said, I don't walk out of one without spending money. So, I thought that those were really good takeaways and a reminder of our, of our neighbors.
Really appreciate that. And we can see some other work he did on the, participated in the beauty and the bridge project and various places, and I will bring that up with our Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. So, back to our city attorney for some advice, because the drive from Weslin must still be underway. I do not see the mayor of Weslin.
Yeah, Mayor, it's your prerogative as the presiding officer over the meeting if you want to move.
you want to move forward.
We will continue with the great intent of getting everything done expeditiously. And I will start with, and I will say that the reason the mayor of West Lynn is coming to this meeting is, of course, West Lynn is in Clackamas County and the tolling activity has been heavily focused around West Lynn and Oregon City and other areas of Clackamas County. And he is going to talk to us about an initiative idea, which is to conduct a survey of voters to ascertain what, you know, he will tell us more about this. But this is an example of a time when our neighboring cities sometimes see value in making their voices heard in a, in a, in various ways when we're facing something big like this. So that's what he is coming to talk about. So let's move on to the consent agenda. And will the city attorney please read the agenda?
Resolution number 3096, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing, applying the current park system development charge to the multifamily portion of the Wilsonville Transit Center Transit Oriented Development Project. Resolution number 3097, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Tepani Inc. for the Charbonneau Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. Capital Improvement Project number 2106. Resolution number 3104, a resolution of the City of, a resolution of the City Council revising Section 4E of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, DEI, Committee Charter. Resolution number 3105, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the purchase of one asphalt patch truck from Premier Truck Group of Portland and minutes of the December 4, 2023 City Council Meeting.
Thank you, the consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion to approve it as read?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
For a second?
A second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. That brings us to continuing business. Will the city attorney please read Resolution number 3091?
Resolution number 3091, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the findings and recommendations of the solid waste collection rate report dated October 2023 and modifying the current Republic Services rate schedule for collection and disposal of solid waste, recyclables, organic materials, and other materials effective February 1, 2024.
Thank you. I'm going to just verify the procedure here, city attorney. I'm going to, do you want me to call the public hearing to order before the staff report or after they finish?
You're, you're not having a public hearing on this?
Oh, no, it's not having a public hearing. I'm sorry, next item. Staff report, please proceed.
While, while they're getting that pulled up, Mayor, I will note, and this is part of your prerogative as the presiding officer, is typically in the new and continuing business, we don't take input from the public on this. I do understand that Republic Services is here, so it is your prerogative if you are so inclined to ask for comments after the staff report, that is something you can do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city councils. Mark Ottenad, Public and Government Affairs Director. And with me tonight is Chris Bell, CPA with Bell &amp; Associates, who's an expert in the solid waste industry. We'll be reviewing basically the solid waste collection rate report of 2023 that was produced The rate review process is composed of several parts. One is the annual cost report with adjusted results for 2022, and then the projected results for 2023, and finally, a rate recommendation for 2024. Republic Services has three principal lines of business, Roll Card, which is residential, Container, which is commercial businesses, and Dropbox, which is industrial customers. The total of all three equals what's known as composite revenue of all three lines of The results for 2022 show essentially that Republic Services was right on the target for the rate of return, the, or the margin that they, the profit from their line of, three lines of business. Our ordinance provides for an eight to 12% rate of return with a target at 10%. So Republic Services came in exactly right at that 10% with their composite rate of return. However, for 2023, the results have gone down in terms of the return on revenues with a composite revenue of 5.73%. You can see the various lines, the residential roll cart was not quite 1% return, commercial container was 6.84%, and industrial Dropbox, 7.95%. When you put those together, it came out about 5.73% as the results, the composite results for this year. We are now going to switch slideshows and Chris Bell is going to provide a little bit more of a macro perspective. And let's see here, and I will have to, yes, I will have to stop screen sharing and then restart screen sharing, so. Oh, a new share, here we go. All right, it worked. Do I do it? Please, I think you can. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to talk about my experience. I know that was a question when councilors met last time regarding, do I know what I'm talking about? So I want to explain that to you. I want to explain your five years over, of, of changes within the city, the increased collection costs that the Republic Services is incurring, the rates, and your further I guess I'll do it. That's you. All right, as Mark said, I am CPA, I don't do taxes, I do garbage. I've been accounting for 30 years, 24 years in garbage. I do rate setting, costing, planning, auditing of garbage companies. Prior to doing this, working for the public side, I worked for Waste Management as a controller. And I've worked for most every jurisdiction within the Portland metropolitan area. I've been working with Clackamas County since 2001 and started working for the City of Wilsonville in 2019. The rate review process is an interesting process that's very unique to the state of Oregon. Local jurisdictions control garbage. You have the means, either contract, pick it up yourself, or franchise. In this case, you have a franchise with a private, privately held collection company. What's unique in the state of Oregon is that everything is broken out by waste sheds, and they're usually at a county level. However, within the Portland metropolitan area, Metro is the waste shed manager. They control the disposal within this, within this particular area. Every year is a rate review process where every franchise hauler submits a detailed cost report. In this case, they submit it, Republic Services submits that to Clackamas County. And they compile all of the composite area haulers to generate a, a rate of return for each jurisdiction that controls, that manages this waste. Over the last five years, we talked about this, that you've seen growth within Wilsonville. 8.7% over the last five years for residential, that's pretty good. Commercial has seen a decrease and most of that came after the 2020, the pandemic. And this is pretty standard for most jurisdictions within the area. Roll-off hauls or Dropbox hauls is a combination of industrial customers and also residential customers and temporary customers. And that's seen an increase over the last five years to 7%. So overall, you've seen an increase in your revenue, or the hauler has. And as, like I was saying last time, you know, increased customer counts and increased activity is good for rates. It keeps the rates low. Wait a minute. Click it again. All right. So disposal, free disposal, what I'm going to show here is your composite rate. And, and what I did is I took your, your residential and commercial customers that utilize a cart for services and consolidated what the average cost is for those, for those services. Right now, 25% of your weekly, or excuse me, monthly garbage rate goes for garbage disposal. 6% for recycling and 8% for yard debris. Join with computer audio? I escaped, okay. Pick up the slideshow again. So disposal accounts for almost 40% of your, your, your monthly bill. Labor, the cost of the drivers, the operations, 25% of your bill. 16% is your truck, which includes the truck, the truck repair and maintenance, the fuel. 9% is the administration, that means the, the people managing, your customer service, your reporting. 5% is the franchise fee paid by the citizens to the City of Wilsonville for the right to provide the service. And as of 2022, the margin for residential service for cart service was 6%. So these are the costs, unit costs, as well as the percentage that make up the monthly garbage bill. So 3127 is about the average garbage bill within the City of Wilsonville. And that covers everybody with a 20, 35, 65, or 95 gallon cart. That's the composite. As I said before, disposal is controlled by Metro. Metro determines how much the taxes are on the garbage. They regulate the flow of waste from the different transfer stations. And, and I'm going to explain this. This means that 40% of the waste generated within the Portland metropolitan area must flow through a Metro transfer station. There's only two. So that means approximately 20% of the total tons generated within the Portland metropolitan area must flow through a Metro transfer station. They also, this right here is what we've seen over the last five years, the increase in the disposal, the tipping fee. In 2018, it went from 94, 95 a ton. Today, it's $137.30. That's almost 45% increase in that period of time. That's a significant amount. The impact on the residential rate pair with a 35 gallon cart is $2.37 increase over that period of time, just for disposal, just for garbage disposal. Interesting enough, you can go back then, Mark. One, you can leave it there. One of, one of the, one of the aspects that I look at is what is controlled by the haulers? What can they control? Because there, there, there's some things that they control, and as we're looking at the disposal, that's a significant amount that's out of their control. That's, and, and, but, but it's not entirely out of your control as a local jurisdiction. And what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing from, from the cities I work for, this, they've got questions regarding, why is this so expensive? And that's something that I think that, you know, local jurisdictions, specifically the local elected officials, have to start asking questions. Why is this so high? And, you know, for $137 a ton, what are we getting for that, that amount that we're paying? The, the transportation costs and disposal costs on this is about $52 a ton. There's a significant amount of fees and taxes that are being paid on garbage. And, and as elected body, you guys need to start asking, where's the benefit? Where's the benefit to the rate payer and, and what are we seeing from this? And I don't mean to be snarky or anything, but, you know, there, there, there's questions that are being presented right now for Metro on, on a long-term planning process. They've got four alternatives that they're seeking input on from, from local jurisdictions. And I would encourage you to take a look at that and say, is there, you know, what, what's beneficial to, to the rate payer here in the City of Wilsonville? The other aspect of, of garbage that's really volatile is recycling markets right now. And what this graph here, it, it looks very squiggly, and it is, but there's three pieces here. There's a blue line, and that's the cost of processing. That's how much it costs to take a, a ton of material and sort it out by paper, plastic, tin, and get it to market. The brown piece is the value or the value of cardboard. And cardboard is about 45 to 55% of the total material that's set out on a curb. It's a significant amount and it has a significant impact on what the rate payer is paying. And so when that value of that material is up, the cost that the rate payers are being asked to pay for is low. But when that value or when that material, in this case, cardboard decreases the value, the cost of processing goes up because that, that, that value of that cardboard buys down the cost of processing. So as we're going into an economy that's softening and slowing, the demand for cardboard slows down and hence your rates go up. Next, please. The other piece too that Republic has to deal with is, is, is labor cost. And labor cost is specifically for unionized drivers with an, a, a, a commercial driver's license. It's, it's, it's becoming very difficult to, to, to find people who are qualified to drive these, these trucks. And so to attract people, the cost of labor is significantly higher. The hourly wage over the last few years has gone from 26, 24 per hour, and it's projected to go over $30 in the upcoming years. And so that's a significant amount, you know, over the last five years, again, it's increased by 17 and a half percent. And I said, like I said, it's a combination of finding qualified CDL drivers and also the, the short labor pool, the small labor pool. So that's something that, that, that Republic Services has to meet. They, they can't not honor the wages of the union. And, and most every hauling company within this area is, is covered under a union contract. If we were to look at the, the, the cost of inflation, and that's also a concern, over the last five years, it's increased 23%. And that's a significant amount because that does have an impact, impact on, on costs and rates, but it's a delayed impact. Even though we're seeing something that increased by 8% in 2022, we're starting to feel the effects in 2023 and 2024. If we were to take that, i- 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 if you had a, a rate that was indexed just by the CPI, your rates today, i- 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 looking from, starting with, with 2018, your rates today would be about $37.53, and that's a significant rate. That's a significant amount. And same with the three yard weekly. Next, please. So over the last five years, Wilsonville has been, you've had some growth, which has increased, or excuse me, increased the, the amount of people and also decreased the impact or the, or the, the need to increase the rates. And if you recall, in 2018, we had the China Sword and there was, there was a, a surcharge that was put in for recycling. It was $2.50 per customer per month. And that was reduced, a dollar, a half of that was reduced to a $1.25 back in 2019. And then for the next couple of years, that kind of rode, and then that was eliminated in 2022. And so over the last five years, your collection rate has actually decreased compared to where it was in 2018. And same with the three yard. And then the, the Dropbox doesn't have that recycling surcharge, but it's been pretty flat over the, over the same period of time.
Can I just ask you to talk about another part of the, the reason? Is it true that the rates went down with our population increasing? Is that, is I, I think I recall that where you have houses close together?
Yes.
The, maybe just describe that factor.
That's, that, I'm glad you brought that up because that's an interesting topic. Because one of the things that, that I look at when, when I'm looking at the haulers, I'm looking at productivity. How fast can they pick up garbage carts, you know, in a particular hour? And when you get a lot of houses next to each other and you got those carts setting up, I mean, you can, you can really knock those down, or in this case, pick them up. We don't knock them down, but you can pick them up quickly. The cost, you know, the approximate cost to, to run a garbage truck is about $125 an hour, right? If you can pick up 100 carts in an hour, that's pretty, that, that, I mean, that's really moving. That's, that's really good thing.
So that contributes. If we were spread out over a lot of different routes and roads, it'd be different.
Correct, correct. If you've seen, Clackamas County has three rates, excuse me, four rates. They have urban and then they have the distant rural, and you should see the, the difference in the rates to pick up the same, you know, garbage cart, because that drive time between each of those pickups is longer. So it's, it's really a function of, of how fast you can pick up garbage in, in a period of time and then, you know, keep those rates low and, and maintain a, you know, good routes, you know, good, good drivers that don't wreck stuff, right? There's a lot that, that's in control for the hauler, and we look at that every year. And if, if that is out of, out of line, you know, for example, if you had up, if, if they're not meeting that... that level of expectation for the city or for the county, there's an adjustment made to that report. So we don't allow for poor performance. We adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
So the change that we're proposing, and again, and I understand is when, you know, council members looked at that rate adjustment from twenty-seven ninety-five to thirty-five, thirty dollars, that nine percent, it was probably surprising, and it should be. But if you look at the rates where they've been over the last five years, you know, your rates have decreased over the last five years. Now we're looking to raise those rates, you know, comparable to where they were in 2018, or a little bit higher than 2018. But over a five-year, over a five-year period, the rate increase, if you broke down by year by year, is very, very minor. And then the other piece, too, is if you looked at the, if we adjusted just by the CPI, based on the contract language, last year, when we came in, the rate of return was at, where is it at here? Nine point seven, nine point seven-nine percent. If we looked at the contract, then you would have saw an increase of seven and a half percent. And even though they were within the margin, the contract says you would increase it by a cap of seven point five percent. Even though the rate CPI was eight point one, your cap is seven and a half percent. So if we'd followed that method, that's lined out in a franchise agreement, you would have saw a rate increase last year. That was necessary. This right here is also looking at that. If you were to look at that, that thirty-five gallon rate at twenty-seven ninety-five, and then if you add the seven and a half percent, it'd be at thirty fifty-five. Not knowing where the 2022 or 2024 CPI, if we added that three point four percent, you'd be at thirty-one dollars and seven cents. So we're looking at the rate review at thirty dollars and fifty-five cents compared to about either thirty oh five or thirty-one oh seven, depending on how the rates, rates results would have been with the seven and a half percent increase. So if you have any questions, I would be, I would be glad to answer those.
The reason that rates have gone up is because the driver wages have gone up close to seven percent. Recycling processing's gone up about twenty-seven percent. Waste disposal fees have gone up almost nine percent, and the health insurance cost has gone up almost seven percent. Is that right?
That's for the year-to-year. We're looking at the year-to-year, correct? Correct.
And I wanted to talk about the disposal costs.
Yes.
One of the things that, you know, we, I know, we go, our staff definitely goes to meetings about the Metro process that comprises all of these fees. I go to some of them. And we have been hearing about potentially building their work to try to find a place to build another transfer station. And some of these meetings, you know, you've got the cost of land. You've got all this struggle, nobody wants it, not here, not there, not anywhere. And a lot of this garbage is, isn't it trucked to Arlington?
This, okay. Metro did a study a while back, and they looked at the current capacity of the transfer system within this area.
Right.
And it's very robust. There are plenty of transfer stations already built and operating. And there's two more that have been built over the last four years by private enterprise, independent of rate payer dollars, that are being constructed. And those tons vary from place to place. So for example, the tons that are being disposed at Metro are going to Arlington. The tons that are being disposed here in Wilsonville are going down to Coffin Butte in Corvallis. The tons actually, and then the tons being disposed at the Forest Grove Transfer Station are also going down to Corvallis. Tons that are being disposed at Canby, at Gresham Sanitary, at City of Roses, are all going to Wasco County landfill. So the tons are going, you know, private enterprises figure out where to put those tons the most efficient way. The transfer capacity, you know, they do have, Metro does have a site up in Cornelius. And the interesting thing is that initially, they were looking at building a transfer station, and it was an incredibly expensive facility. And keep in mind, a transfer station is no more than a steel building with concrete. You throw the garbage on the concrete, you scoop it up, you put it in a truck, and you send it down the road. It's no more simpler than that. Some of them, you can put in a compactor if it's a long haul. Wilsonville does have a compactor to maximize the, you know, the payload they can put on the road. But it's no more simpler than that. Gresham Sanitary has built a transfer station right now, I believe for fifteen million, brand new. So, but you have in Cornelius, which is probably the farthest northwest area. And so if they build that, Forest Grove, the transfer station in Forest Grove is going to be put out of business. Hillsborough Garbage does have a reload facility that they can utilize. So the capacity is there. What is not available is self-haul capacity.
Right.
And that's a concern. And you can see that if you've driven by Oregon City or Metro Central during the weekend, it's, there's a lot of people using that.
And some people have to drive a long way to the, where they want to dump it. So if we're going to advocate, which we will, for the lower costs, where would you recommend we start?
I would start asking, Metro's got four scenarios they're looking at right now. And one of them, and I gotta, it's been a while since I looked at it. I believe scenario number four, and we can, Cindy here can speak a little bit more to that, to those alternatives, but alternative number four eliminates a lot of the issues that the private transfer stations have with Metro. And that is, the big thing is flow control, right? And so if you're taking twenty percent of the tons, and you're saying you got to run into Metro Central, and right here is a transfer station, you know, you're driving that garbage at another distance to put it to Metro and then to send it to Arlington when it can go here. And if you look at the costs that Republic Services is charging for disposal compared to Metro, they're lower. They're lower. So the cities that have transfer stations are looking at this and saying, this is, this doesn't make a lot of sense for us to force garbage to drive further distance to make sure that we meet this forty percent cap. Metro did a study a couple of years ago and looked at vehicle miles traveled. And what they determined, and keep, that method for calculating or determining flow of tons has been kind of forgotten. But they wanted to reduce the amount of time that the garbage trucks spend on the road. So like I said before, if your garbage truck is running at a hundred and twenty-five an hour, and you're spending an hour in traffic, you know, that hour in traffic is going to be pushed back to the rate payers because that productivity number is going to decrease. And so there's impacts all around. You know, there is a big question on what to do with self-haulers. And Metro is, unfortunately for them, the, kind of the last resort for services. If the private enterprise can't provide those, then Metro provides that, and that's part of the regional system fee. But, you know, that's what it should be.
We need more capacity for self-haulers.
Correct. Correct. And then the other piece, too, on that is there's the RMA that's coming up, and they're going to be acquiring, you know, depots and stuff like that. So the combination of expanding self-haul opportunities to the different areas and the utilization of recycling depots under the RMA is a perfect, perfect scenario for Metro.
Thank you. Councilors, other questions for our expert resource here? Thank you, Mr. Bell.
You're welcome.
I will note that the city manager has me monitoring the Metro waste services and those four scenarios that Mr. Bell has just addressed. So we are in the process of monitoring and participating in the Metro process.
Thank you. I see that Council President Ockerball has her hand up.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you can help confirm, I guess, a question that I have or a statement, observation. So with our ordinance, we are looking for, in this instance, when we have an extraordinary rate increase, we're looking for an extraordinary or unanticipated event in order for that to happen. And I appreciated how our packet material clarified that structure that we have to work with. So is it accurate to say that really the extraordinary event is the combination of events that we're seeing? Because, you know, looking through kind of the history and the figures that we have for the last five years or so, we have seen instances, or, you know, looking, I think it was between year 2020 and 2021, like at that time period, there was a, there was a big jump in disposal fees in that year period, too. I think it went up seventeen percent, the chart said seventeen percent for the total disposal fees went up there. So we've seen increase in disposal fees before. And in that year, the operating margin still remained quite high. It was well above the target. It was almost sixteen percent. So we've seen fees, and it hasn't, you know, created this dip in the, in the operating margin like we're anticipating and seeing at this time. And so is it accurate to say that it's not, it's not any one of these, you know, things on our list? It's the combination of all of the things? Because I guess we could also note that in 2021, your graph for the, showing the recycling values, the cardboard value was quite high. So maybe that helped offset some of these fees, disposal fees that we were seeing? Or maybe it was because we had more, you know, we had more homes that were added in Wilsonville in that year particularly, or something like that? And it kind of helped offset? But it's, is it really just that we have all of these things coincide at the same year in time, and that is why we are seeing this lower operating margin?
That's, 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 yes. And you bring up the point, too, back after 2020, there was a significant increase in the value of recyclable materials, unexpected. And again, it's one of those commodity things where the markets demanded, demanded the material. And then over the last, I would say, eighteen months, you know, with the economy slowing down and cooling, there's been this, this slower response for, for the material, for the demand for it. And that's why you've seen the decrease. But at the same time, you've also seen increase for fuel. You've seen increase for labor. The one thing that's coming up shortly is that Oregon, as well as Washington, have signed on to this no internal combustion engines, the carb compliance rules. And that is, that, I personally hope that, you know, the states, whether it's Washington or Oregon, or both of them, look at that and say, this is unrealistic because that is going to limit the amount of internal combustion engines that can be purchased within the state for fleets. And that includes CNG trucks. As we're pushing for digesters and alternative means for fuel, that means that those CNG trucks, because they burn that natural gas, are not considered allowable. And so you're looking at a garbage truck that's running on batteries, that's anywhere from six hundred and fifty to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And right now, the reliability of those trucks is, it's still experimental. And at some point, if the law doesn't change, you know, Republic Services, as well as the other garbage companies, are going to have to do one of two things. They're going to replace those aging trucks with electric trucks, if they can get them. And then when they do get them, that cost is going to be significant. Because the productivity on those trucks right now, they're running about six or seven hours. And these CNG trucks, you know, that Republic's running right now, they can run ten to twelve hours. And so you've got, you need two trucks to replace the one, the turn. So there are a lot of things that are, that people need to be asking, you know, is this really a reasonable replacement at this point in time, you know, with the experimental nature of electric trucks, electric garbage trucks? And the other things, these trucks are heavy. They are really heavy. So that's, you know, if you're a public works person, you're seeing the weight of these trucks rolling down your street, you're going to have some significant concerns.
What is the year this is triggered or fully in effect?
The number I, and I can't confirm this, I heard, one of the haulers told me that the up is either 2024 or 2025, the amount of trucks that can be sold within the state of Oregon are limited.
Yeah.
And I can get that information for you. I can pass that to Mark.
Well, so Councilor President Ockerball, did that, did that answer your question, or do you have a follow-up?
No, I think it does. My one follow-up would be, I mean, we have some unknowns, too, right?
We've got a lot of unknowns.
Exactly. And they could be detrimental, or maybe there's, who knows?
Yeah.
Who knows? But if we find ourselves in a place like, like we were in 2019, 2020, 2021, where the operating margin was much higher than what our, our goal or our, you know?
Target.
Yeah, the target. Because in those years, it was sixteen percent. So if we find ourselves in that place again, then what happens?
Rate decrease.
We do a rate decrease.
No, she said if the operating margin gets much higher.
Yeah.
No, exactly.
Yeah, just decrease the rates.
Decrease it, yeah. And we've done that in the past, haven't we?
Yes, yes, you've done it twice in the past five years.
We're built in for that.
Yes.
It sounds like, yeah.
We removed the recycling surcharge, but we didn't decrease the actual base rate, correct?
Correct. The, yeah, the recycle, yeah.
No, we reduced the base rate in 2022.
Yeah.
Okay, we did, okay. Okay, and then that's brought us to the ten percent.
Correct.
In 2022.
Correct.
Okay, and now we're going to try to hone in on our target even more.
It sounds like we need to work on talking to our fellow cities and legislators about the impending cost to consumers of the, basically, the loss of CNG trucks and others, and really illustrate that. And while that, you know, I think those increasing costs will cause other things to be cut, other environmental improvements that people might want to do that cost money may be cut as well.
Correct.
If those costs keep going up.
One of the, one of the things, too, that I, a lot of people don't appreciate it, understand, you know, this is the franchise, and the city of Wilsonville doesn't mandate garbage collection. And so at some point, if garbage, the cost of service gets too high, some people either reduce their service, right? They'll go from maybe a thirty-five gallon cart to a twenty gallon cart.
Consumers, yeah.
Consumers, correct. Or they may just say, you know, I'll figure out a way to do it myself, right?
And we've seen that happen, and that causes other environmental problems, dumping.
Correct.
So it's not magic. You don't have a magic wand here. There's limited levers to pull. Well, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I correct some, can I just clarify something? Because I want to make sure that the record's clear on this. The way that our franchise agreement is written, if there is, if the percentage is higher than twelve percent, our franchise agreement says that the rate doesn't change. And the idea behind that was, at some point in time, the rates will catch up to the target operating margin. We have done rate decreases in the past because the rate was, because the operating margin was significantly higher than the twelve percent. That was through a negotiation with Republic Services, but that's not a requirement under our franchise agreement. So I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you for clarifying that. So what would be that sort of like a good neighbor agreement that has happened in the past?
Correct.
Is there a way to correct that?
Through a change, through an amendment to our ordinance, yes.
That's something that we could work on. That's something that we could work on.
And, and I think it's kind of because these fluctuations do happen.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a, a good thing to, to identify that, to make sure that we have that opportunity. We would be lucky to be able to work on that, because it sounds like the costs are going up. We may not be able to have that opportunity.
Right. And then for the extraordinary rate increase, it's only triggered when it falls under, below the 8% operating margin. So to Council President Ockervall's point, if we're seeing, if we're seeing some things that would otherwise, you would think, you know, you see a significant increase, if it's not actually impacting the overall operating margin, to fall below the 8%, the, Republic Services would not be in a position to ask for an extraordinary rate increase.
Thank you. Any other comments, councilors, questions? Seeing none, it looks like we've covered everything. I think we have some projects ahead of us, looking at the industry.
Yes, indeed.
And advocating. Thank you for bringing that up. So I think we're ready to call for the vote, right? May I have a motion on Resolution Number 3091? Counselors?
So, go ahead.
Counselor, Counselor Berry, go ahead.
So I have a motion to approve Resolution, is it 391?
30.
3091.
And I'll second.
The motion to... Is it adopt or approve?
I'm sorry.
I think so. Would you like to correct that?
Okay. I move that we adopt Resolution 3091.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been made by Counselor Berry and seconded by Council President Ockervall to adopt Resolution 3091. Is there any discussion? Maybe we've had enough discussion over several weeks. So thank you, everybody, for all of your time. And our councilors have put a lot of time into studying this. I also want to especially recognize Council President Ockervall for doing some really diligent review of this, and all of the councilors. And thank you to our consultant, Chris Bell, for your time with us. And I'm glad that we have continued to work with our own independent consultant to review these rates.
Thank you. I'm enjoyed working with Mark and Amanda.
And thank you, Mark Ottenad, for leading on this. So not hearing any, not seeing any other comments, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I didn't, did I hear Counselor Linville?
I think we'll, why don't you go through the rest of the options, and then we can determine.
Any nays?
Nay.
Mayor, if you're unclear, you can ask for a roll call vote.
Yeah, I would like to ask if there's any, any discussion on that. Is it too late to ask for that? Too late?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we heard the votes. I, I wasn't, I heard all the votes. We have the motion passes four to one. All right, that brings us to a public hearing. We still don't have the mayor, Wes Lynn, here. Hope he's all right up. Okay, will you please read the ordinance?
Yes, and to, again, to clarify for the council, we'll have one public hearing for both ordinances, but you will vote on them separately on first reading. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 884, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville annexing approximately 2.02 acres of property located at the northwest corner of Southwest Frog Pond Lane and Southwest Stafford Road for development of an 11-lot residential subdivision. And this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 885, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Clackamas County Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-Acre, RRFF5, zone to the residential neighborhood, RN Zone, on approximately 2.02 acres located at the northwest corner of Southwest Frog Pond Lane and Southwest Stafford Road for development of an 11-lots residential subdivision.
Thank you. I call to order the public hearing regarding Ordinance Numbers 884 and 885 on first reading. Do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact, or any information gained outside of the hearing? Have all members familiarized themselves with the application?
Yes.
Okay. Do any members of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the city For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that the failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, based on that issue. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which you believe apply to the decision. City council meetings are open to the public. This meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance, in writing, by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to provide testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder that you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply indicate, indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. At this time, I call for staff to present the proposal and list the applicable substantive approval criteria. One, planning staff presentation. A, council may ask questions of staff. No advocacy or general discussion by council at this point. Two, comments from city attorney. And then I will go to applicant making the presentation, and the council can ask, and members of the audience who wish to speak to the application. We'll start with the staff presentation right now.
Okay, let me see here. No, it's the wrong one. Okay. It's not that. Sorry. Go ahead. Everybody leaves the presentations up. Okay, yes, that was it. Uh, yes. Clicking, it's all right. You know how to do it better than I do, isn't it, from beginning? Okay.
Text it to me, Mayor, and I'll step out and call.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and I am here tonight to present for your review Ordinance Numbers 884 and 885, which are an annexation and zone map amendment for the Frog Pond Petrus Homes 11-lot subdivision. As required by statute, I would announce that the applicable review criteria for Ordinance Number 884 are included on Page 2 of the annexation findings in Exhibit C of Attachment 1 of the council staff report. Review criteria for Ordinance Number 885 are on Page 2 of the zone map amendment findings in Exhibit B of Attachment 2 of the council staff report. The proposed 11-lot subdivision is the 11th development in Frog Pond West. The subdivision will connect to the previously approved Frog Pond Crossing subdivision to the north, and Frog Pond Ridge subdivision to the south, blending together as one cohesive neighborhood consistent with the Frog Pond West master plan. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Southwest Frog Pond Lane and Southwest Stafford Road. The property is surrounded by land that has already been annexed to the city with other subdivision projects, including the Southwest Stafford Road and Southwest Frog Pond Lane Rites of Way. The subject property is located in Clackamas County and zoned Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-Acre. The area proposed for annexation is Tax Lot 200, which includes 2.02 acres. The property is contiguous to land currently in the city, within the urban growth boundary, and master planned for residential development. All property owners and a majority of electors have consented in writing to the annexation. As a result, council is able to move forward with annexing the property. The proposed zone map amendment is to rezone Tax Lot 200 from Clackamas County Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-Acre to the city's residential neighborhood zone. The rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan map designation of residential neighborhood, as well as with the Frog Pond West master plan. On December 11th, 2023, Development Review Board Panel A recommended to city council approval of the proposed annexation and zone map amendment by Resolution Number 423. At the December 11th meeting, the DRB also approved, with conditions, a Stage 1 preliminary plan, Stage 2 final plan, site design review of parks and open space, tentative subdivision plat, middle housing land division, and waiver for the proposed subdivision. Approval of these requests is contingent on city council approval of the annexation and zone map amendment before you tonight. Based on the information presented, staff recommends approval of the annexation and zone map amendment requests. And that concludes my presentation tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions? Yeah, this, so we'll have a, we'll have clarifying questions now, and then after we make the motion, we'll have a discussion.
So I have a question, just based on the history. Oh, why was this piece of land not annexed when other areas was?
It was, it was under separate ownership from other properties surrounding it, and the property owner chose to not develop it until this point.
Okay, seeing no other clarifying questions, do we have any comments from the city attorney?
No comments.
And I have a speaker card from Mr. Sutherland, the applicant. Would you like to make a presentation? And if you'll just state your name and affiliation?
Glenn Sutherland, AKS Engineering and Forestry, and my address is 12965 Herman Road, Suite 100, Tuolton, Oregon 97062. I did have a presentation, but I don't believe I have any other facts to add to the record, so I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Well, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate that. Council, do you have any questions of the applicant representative? Okay. We had really thorough information provided. Are there any member, there, I don't have any record of anyone else here to speak. Is that still correct? Hearing no further questions, and everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 8:30, 2:00 p.m. on December 18th. I will now call for the vote.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah. I meant, ask for a motion.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 884 on first reading.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Counselor Berry moved, and Counselor Dunwell seconded, adopting Ordinance Number 884. Is there any discussion? Okay, glad to see more Frog Pond moving along. I will call for a vote on this ordinance, 884. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion on Ordinance Number 885?
I move to adopt Ordinance 885 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I second.
Had a motion by Counselor Berry, and a second by Counselor Dunwell, to adopt Ordinance Number 885 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Do you have language at the end of that?
Oh, yeah, there's one more little part.
Oh, no, I, I think it's just for the second reading, never mind.
I don't have it.
You're right.
Yay! Okay, I, I, I sometimes get ahead of myself on these, but we're okay there. So that brings us to... Our city manager is out calling the mayor of West Lynn, and we'll wait to hear from him. So, Amanda, do we have any legal business?
I feel like I should come up with something to fill the time.
I wonder, Gina, if you could check with the city manager, please, thank you. Well, what we could do for a moment here is look in our information section that has been, that our staff goes to a lot of trouble to provide monthly reports, and they don't get a lot of visibility in our council meetings, because we have so much going on here.
I would love to.
He's just got a hold of him, and he's on his way from Costco.
Ah, good.
And that was like three minutes ago.
Okay, he didn't stop to shop.
He was shopping at Costco. He forgot about the meeting. In two minutes.
Okay, luckily, we're the best place to go at 8:30.
There's no Costcos in West Lynn.
Exactly.
I, I would like to comment on the monthly staff reports.
So let me go back and just clarify, we're at city manager's business, Mr. Causegrove.
Happy holidays, safe travels to Counselor Ockervall.
Yes, and, yes, and what we were doing in this little brief moment is looking at the monthly reports, and Counselor Berry had a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been meaning to comment at our more recent city council meetings. I love these reports, and I know that it takes a lot of time and effort for each department to prepare them, but I do go through and read them, and that's how I'm learning about what's going on with city council. And I especially love it when they have charts and photos.
I will pass that along.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, because a lot of work does go into those, so I appreciate it.
And that they're monthly. I mean, I appreciate that.
It's something that is also required.
By you, or by?
The roles and responsibilities in the, not in the charter, but in the administrative section, I'm supposed to give you monthly reports on each department. So that's why those are in there. You're welcome.
And photos really help.
Yes, thank you.
And within the, one of the reports, specifically, I think it was the economic, let's see, community development division, I think, we, we just had references to something that came up, came up in a couple of different things, is, is there meetings with... up, came up in a couple of different things, is, is there meetings with businesses and developers on ways to improve processes? There is a lot of process, and I appreciate even just last week, when the staff hears about something that is challenging from our constituency, they sit down with them and try to improve that. And so that's referenced in some of the reports.
The economic development division.
Okay, that's where that was. And there's also a report on the Oregon White Oak Report Response Coordination, and just want to acknowledge how difficult it's been for everybody to see the demise of some of our white oaks that got clobbered by the oak, Mediterranean oak borer. Is there any update on that?
Yes, you'll be getting a more fulsome update at your first meeting in January. It's on the agenda. And he said his ETA was 8:37, so he should be in the parking lot.
You know, just to go back on these staff reports, like on the natural resources division, where they have the report on the Arrowhead Creek Park pollinators habitat, and they show all the volunteers in their photo, I just think that's really, really neat. Those are things that we might not normally hear about.
So we'll just take a brief moment here to accommodate.
I'll see if he's in the parking lot, Mayor.
And what, what is being requested, so that you can be thinking about this, is there is a, this idea to do a study, I mean, a public opinion poll.
He's here.
I will let him take it from here.
I'm here.
Hello, Mayor Rory.
Sorry, thank you.
Would you like to sit down? And I'd like to introduce Mayor Rory Bielostowski. How did I do on that?
You're good. That's perfect.
Okay, Mayor of West Lynn, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Thank you, yeah. Well, thank you for having me today. Sorry I was a little bit late. Hopefully I'm not too late. It looked like some people were just filing out. Yeah, so I've been working a lot on the tolling issue with Mayor Fitzgerald and other mayors, and one of the things that kind of came up in conversations over the last few months, thinking specifically of the survey that ODOT put out, kind of asking folks about different concerns about RMPP, the regional tolling plan. I kind of realized that there was a lack of statistical data about the public's concern, so I kind of criticized that survey from ODOT, saying, hey, there's no data, there's never been any public opinion data gathered on the topic of tolling. So that led me to think, well, could we do that? So I reached out to a few firms, and one in particular, DHM, gave me a scope and cost estimate for how much it would cost to kind of do a regional poll on the topic of tolling, so that we could actually get some statistical data to take down to legislature and do other things with, you know, anything we'd, so choose to kind of help influence the conversation. And specific things that I was, we were thinking about polling, asking the public about, is like, you know, what does the public think of current tolling plans? We've seen last week here at this chamber, you know, a lot of people are concerned, but in a statistically valid format, you know, what would that look like? Would it be 50%, 70%, 90%? That's never been quantified in any way. You know, how effective has ODOT's outreach been in terms of public understanding? You know, if you ask 10 people, what's the RMPP, how many people could actually answer that question cognizant, in a, in a, in an informed way? How many people think the tolling's paused or canceled permanently? You know, what's, we have no idea what the public understanding is. And then, and most importantly, for the conversation with legislatures, like, what's public support for alternatives to tolling? If that's, you know, the current, alternatives to the current approach in particular, you know, tolling one lane versus all lanes, you know, increasing the gas tax, things like that, you know, would people be more supportive of other options versus tolling all lanes of our interstates? So I was just, I've been shopping around at different cities to see if communities would be interested in kind of partnering on, on the funding that poll. It was $33,000. So my thought was.
The cost is $33,000.
The total cost is $33,000 for a statistically valid poll with a margin of error of 4% and a region-wide poll of the tri-county area. And so that's why I contacted the mayor, asked what she thought, and she thought, the city manager thought it'd be good if I came to city council and kind of made that presentation, took questions. I have to do a disclaimer, I'm not the pollster. DHM would be, who's reputable, would be doing the question writing, the kind of, all the data collection, et cetera. But for, if city's interested in contributing like $5,000, we would then, you'd have a seat at the table to help influence the questions, you know, or the scope of what the survey covers and that process. So that was kind of the.
Thank you. And if you could, having talked to you about this before, if you could just add a little bit more about the, once this is completed, which I think would be done in about January, what would be the next steps with it? How would it be used?
Oh, yeah, so DHM would, we'd work to build the questions in January, take a few weeks to do the survey, a couple of weeks, and then if, when the survey is done, they'd present, they'd create a presentation and then come to cities, come to a meeting and present the results of the data. One date that I'm eyeing is in the end of February, on the Joint Transportation Committee Special Subcommittee on Transportation Planning, there's a meeting scheduled to discuss potential alternatives and kind of discuss the next step, so where they go with what they've done. And it'd be interesting to, you know, have some data actually saying, you know, here's what the public thinks about.
And you would present that to the joint committee subcommittee?
Yeah, or any lawmakers that are, that were interested, you could, you know, and so that's kind of the intent, and being really cognizant of not being biased and asking questions in a fair way is important. That's why we're thinking, let's have somebody outside.
Has credibility.
Yeah, have somebody outside, because, you know, I criticize ODOT's survey for asking questions like, is it reasonable to pay a few dollars for a faster trip when it could end up costing actually, you know, folks $10 or $20? So I criticize that kind of questioning, and so being careful in our, not to do the same thing that we criticize for, you know, and actually just getting the honest data is important. So that's kind of the, that's the overall intent of, of the survey, is just to, because nothing's ever been done on the topic from a statistically valid poll perspective, which is kind of interesting, I mean, we're so far down the line, we've seen some stuff in the newspaper, they'll do kind of informal polls in pamplum media, but never had something that's like, okay, in a valid way, and what do people think? And so that's, that's my purpose.
Would the telephone, would this be a telephone poll or mailing survey, or how would you, what's the method?
So DHM does a wide variety of ways to get responses. They do telephone and text, and then they have a way of weighting the data so that it's all, it's valid from the standpoint of, because they say different age groups and people are more active in certain, you know, modes of communication, so they've, rather than having all calls, they've transitioned to doing a hybrid approach of both, but.
Counselor Dunwell?
How large is the sample size that you're estimating for that $31,000?
So for $33,000, it would be 600, and it could, for more money, they gave a range, so, you know, six, for 600 is $33,000, and I think for 800, it's, I think, $10,000 more. It's all about the labor that would take them to.
So the follow-on question, I think, would then be, how wide is that scope for the, for that sample size? Does that include Multnomah County? Does it include, you know, what, what is the actual geographic?
So it would be the tri-county area, so Multnomah County, Clackamas County, and Washington County, and that could be negotiated, you know, if we got to the table at the.
I'm surprised you're not including Marion County in that.
Could definitely include more, you know, it's, that was just, we, some folks were saying, you know, concerns from Oregon City was, you know, why pull outside of our city or our community, our kind of area? One counselor asked that question, thought it was a good question, but you just, the broader, the better, as far as I'm concerned, because, you know, when you talk about, so for example, we just pulled West Lynn, who would care about that?
It wouldn't show any significance, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So you're, so, and I was just in, working with some other groups that did surveys as well, and they did use the number of 600 contacts, and maybe it would go up if you, if you add another county as, as a common number in Oregon, apparently, to get a good read. And the, the cost was, I think it depends on how long, how much time each, each contact takes. So this is, as I understood, a number of cities are contributing to this. We have not budgeted for this. If we were to vote as a, as a council to contribute $5,000, then we would have a seat at the table to help compose the questions, talk about the, the scope, the geographic scope and so forth. If we choose to contribute something under that, I understand, you know, we would, we would just be a contributor and have, and, you know, have the satisfaction knowing this poll was being conducted and that we had a part in it. And so that's what we're here for. Other questions?
I have another question. So I think, I think having the wide area of the tri-county makes sense, but I also, my preference would be to have a, a smaller or a secondary survey of Clackamas County, because I know, like, attending the C4 and the C4 subcommittees, we're all pretty aligned, and we have a strong opinion on tolling and, you know, options that would occur, and I would think that that would be really important to get to the legislature, our voice.
And could they break that out also? Could they, could they give a data analysis of, okay, here was what the tri-county area said, here's what Clackamas County said?
I think that's possible for sure. Great point, I agree, you know, the more data, the better. I think, probably can, again, I'm not the, I'm not DHM, so, but I am just speaking from my understanding of their proposal, was that they will have like cross, cross breakdowns of demographics, you know, all sorts of demographic data that I'm guessing would include county, for sure.
Because my concern about doing the tri-county is that there's been a whole lot less discussion out in the public about tolling to 17 or even I-26, but there's been a lot of discussion in Clackamas County, and I just would really want to get that point across.
Counselor, Council President Akrapal?
I guess one question that I would have is the confidence that, or what is the confidence that this would be able to be completed in the timeline where information can be delivered to the necessary parties? You said end of February? It sounds like it's coming up quick.
Yeah, I talked to John Horvick a couple, like, a week ago about this, kind of touching base, because we decided to move forward at the city of West Lynn, and said, wouldn't be a problem to write the questions in the beginning of January, that, to collect the data and put into a report by the February, end of February, early March, something like that. So it was doable, so.
And when, what is the date and time that the audience is meeting where this information would be delivered?
It's on the joint subcommittees, so we're, this would more just be, we're not on any agenda to deliver it, to be 100% clear, but around the date of their last meeting, I think it's in February, end of, we're not sure the specific date or if they've even named a specific date, but it's during the legislative session, the short session.
So the intention is to get it completed, and that does comport with the two other surveys I was involved in, they did it in that short of a time, and had the completed And then it would be, it would be presented to the joint committee before the session is over?
That's the intent, yeah, to take it down there, and like I said, we're not, we don't have like a specific spot on the agenda for this matter, but being able to take it down there, I think, would be a good thing for, especially.
Oh, thank you. So this isn't, this is not budgeted. If we were to spend up to $5,000, I'd like to ask the city manager, where could that be sourced from?
We could absorb that into our existing budget.
Okay.
It's not a large amount of money.
As part of our work representing our city in the face of tolling?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, how many people do you expect would be around the table trying to agree on things?
Think about, great question, about five, five, five different people.
Very, I would assume, very disparate interests, and you're confident that they can come to some kind of an agreement?
Yeah, no, I think so. So I'll just, the list right now that I've, is Oregon City, Tuallaton, West Lynn, and potentially Wilsonville, and I reached out to one labor organization who is interested in the topic of tolling because of impacts to their members. And so when, because I was looking for money, thought they might be able to contribute, so, and we're still working out the details of that, but they might be the other one. But in the event that we're not able to come up with the full amount, the city would just probably absorb the rest, but.
Okay, so the question is, I mean, what I could do for a process here is to get to a discussion, so we can see what people want. Could we make a motion for a certain amount, second the motion, and then say, open for discussion? People can say, no, I want this amount, or I don't like that, or whatever they want to say, and we would then amend the motion?
If there was any amendments. It sounds like $5,000 buys you a seat at the table, is that correct?
Yeah, sure.
That was the plan. So can I make the motion?
I think you would have somebody else on council.
Okay. May I have a motion to commit to, commit $5,000 to this poll as described by Mayor Bielostowski? Could I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we commit $5,000 to this survey as proposed.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just would like to say, I like this idea. I've heard in, in general, just, you know, coming to different meetings, people have talked about putting it to the vote, to the voters in the fall, and this seems like a simpler, easier way to get opinions, to find out where people really stand. So I appreciate you taking the lead on that.
Any other comments, questions? Council President Akrapal?
That question about what the public support is for alternatives is particularly interesting.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure how that would, would be framed or written, you know, for, as far as a question, but that concept is an interesting concept to include.
And I think this is a good idea because our constituency is expecting us to stand up and find out what is the right way to pay for these freeway improvements, and we have been to untold numbers of me. And we have been to untold numbers of meetings hearing about it. And so I think this sounds like a fair and logical way to be able to demonstrate what people responded to in this poll. It's a one tool. It's probably not going to win the day, but I think if we use it really strategically. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, hey, thanks for having me today, and we look forward to the continued partnership. I think, you know, especially with regard to the topic of the poll, it's stronger together. And it's been on the topic of tolling in general, but, you know, we thought, you know, a city could, one city could absorb $33,000. But it'd be better to have multiple perspectives at the table and, you know, have it. The message at the end of it, when it's done, will be, you know, several cities banded together to fund that. So more powerful, I think.
All right. Thank you for coming to describe it and listening to all of the comments from our counselors who all have great
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Who's going to be at the table? Are you looking for an elected official from our city? Are you going to be having staff people? I would assume since it's a policy issue that it would be elected officials.
Yeah.
But I don't want to make assumptions. I want to ask you.
Good question. And I'll add two comments to that. One, I think an elected official, whoever's the person with the passion of transportation or anything who could be
They all five are passionate about tolling.
I'm sure, I know. So counsel will have to decide who can serve on that. But the other thing is, the city of West Lynn will carry the contract and just, to make it easy. Yeah, to make it easier for all the cities so that we don't have to have intergovernmental agreements from everybody. Can you imagine that? So we'll
I would like to ask our council members to please send me or the city manager an email if you would like to be that person. Doesn't have to be me. And I know there are some people with some expertise here, and we're just going to send one. So please raise your hand if you'd like to do that by sending an email.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further city manager business? No legal business. Meeting is adjourned. 9:00 p.m.